So this is for the LPA meeting for tonight. So Mayor Brighters.
Here.
Board Member Al Britton.
Here.
Board Member Hartman.
Yeah.
Board Member, Board Member Jablonski.
Here.
And Board Member Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a call on there.
All right, thank you. Let's do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. All right, so we were just talking about item number three, and so this is an item that was really left over from the prior meeting, but we want to coordinate the LPA item with the with the actual council review of that item. So the thought is that this would be an item we may want to table for the next meeting so that we can have both of them come up in the same evening. So if there's a motion to table, that would be appreciated.
So moved.
Second.
And then a current state law, just to make sure that it's time and date certain, Russell, could you state the time and day for that?
For this will be Thursday, December 10th at 7:00 PM.
All right, is there any discussion on that? All right, Russell, if you can do the call roll on that.
Sure. Board Member Al Britton.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonski.
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Yes.
And Mayor Brighter.
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay.
And then item number four.
Item number four, mayor, is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council adopt the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2021 through 2025, and providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, calls the roll, please.
Board Member Al Britton.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonski.
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, then the last item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from October 22nd.
I had a lot.
I moved.
Second.
I do appreciate that. Any corrections, adjustments to the minutes? All right, if we can call the roll on that.
Board Member Al Britton.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonski.
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Yes.
And Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes. Thanks.
On that item.
All right, Gary, you're up, man.
What happened?
Looking for that adjournment. Looking for that adjournment.
Oh, motion to adjourn, sorry. I got a new, I got a new toy here.
You had one job, one job. Representative, we're going into a real meeting.
Oh, we're going into a real meeting. That's so quick.
That was just, that was just a quick LPA. I was saving you for the real meeting.
That was the appetizer. That was the appetizer.
That's good. I'm still trying to figure out the phones right now.
All right, that's awesome. So that's the LPA meeting. That concludes the LPA meeting, and we can kick off the regular meeting. So Russell, if you can call the roll for the regular meeting.
Or Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Al Britton.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
And Councilmember Kaczynski.
Here.
Hey, Russell, I don't know if you need to adjust your mic or get it a little closer, but you're muted. You're, you're, you don't sound like yourself.
Okay. How about that? Is that any better?
That's a little better.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No, no worries.
Okay, let's do the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
So the next item is the selection of the vice mayor, but before we get there, we do have a special guest with us this evening, newly elected representative, Robin Bartman, who we all know very well. So Robin, it's, it's wonderful to have you here. Congratulations on your election, and we're really looking forward to working with you. If you can just say maybe a few words.
Okay, well, I want to first of all congratulate the new mayor, the new commissioners. I'm very excited to work with you. We've had a longstanding relationship for the last 16 years serving as your school board member. So I'm honored to be your state representative, and I want to make sure that I am available to you as elected officials, as well to, as well as the residents in Southwest Ranches. For those of you who don't know a lot about me, I started my career as a special education teacher. I wanted to be an assistant principal in Liberty City. I was a city commissioner in your neighboring city, Weston, so I understand home rule and the importance of home rule and municipal budgeting. And for the last 16 years, I've been the countywide school board member. I want to make sure that I understand what the priorities are of this town council. If there are any appropriation asked from the state, so I could submit them for you. What issues you have, and as, and for the residents that are on the phone and watching tonight, I want to hear from you. What ideas do you have? What would you like to see happen at the state level? What problems are you experiencing? How can I help you? So I'm going to very quickly just give my cell phone number for the people who are watching. So I want them to know that they can get in touch with me. I'm a hands-on elected official. That's my personal cellphone. You'll get me immediately. And my email is robin.bartman@myfloridahouse.gov. So if you have a concern, a criticism, an idea, just if you don't think it falls under my responsibility, reach out to me. I can get you the person you need to go to. And I look forward to serving each and every one of you and having open lines of communication. And hopefully COVID will end and we'll be able to have bingo games again. So thank you all very much.
Great, great. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Is there any?
The mayor, would you, does this town council adopt a formal legislative platform, or is it something that you were going to submit to me? I'm just curious because every municipality does it a little differently.
Yeah, I don't think we normally have a formal platform, but we definitely want to get with you. There are obviously some things that we are working on here in town and would greatly appreciate your support on. And so we definitely want to communicate with you and kind of have those conversations.
And should I go through your office, mayor, or through the city manager's office? How would you prefer we go about that?
I, I think, I think probably the city manager actually may be a better place to start. I would like to obviously be in the conversations, but they've got a lot of the paperwork already, the list of the projects and things that we're working on, so we can start there. And then I definitely want to be part of the conversation.
I would love that because I plan on working for you. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you, thank you. All right, um, all right, anything, anybody else, any, any words for Robin?
Mayor. No, not for Robin. Congratulations, Robin.
All right, all right. Thank you, Robin. Thank you for joining us. Really appreciate it. Okay. All right. Yes, Councilmember Jablonski.
Um, yes, thank you, mayor. I would love to make a motion that we nominate Councilmember Bob Hartman as our new vice mayor. And I would really appreciate a second.
Second.
All right, all right, that's exciting.
Russell, did you read that into the record?
No, I didn't, but I was going to, but I got the mic.
Do so and fill in with Councilmember, potentially Vice Mayor Hartman's name.
Sure. So item number three is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, appointing Councilmember Bob Hartman as the new vice mayor of the town of Southwest Ranches and providing an effective date.
So I appreciate you nominating me, Gary, but I thought we were going to flip a coin.
You didn't talk fast enough.
Isn't that what you've been in the past?
One time.
Yep, I remember.
You know what, Bob, it doesn't matter. The coin always comes out with him winning anyway, so it doesn't, doesn't really matter.
That's fine. I would be happy to accept. I'd be honored to accept.
That's excellent. Thank you. All right, any, just any further discussion on this item? All right, Russell, if you can call the vote.
Sure, mayor. Councilmember Al Britton.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, just for this one roll call, I just want to make sure you understand it's still, we have to call it in the order, so it's going to be Councilmember Hartman, just for the roll call purposes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jablonski.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Yes.
And Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes, absolutely. Congratulations, Bob.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
All right. Item number five is public comment. Russell, do we have any, anyone?
Yes, we have one person so far, mayor raising his hand, Mr. Barry James Barry. Let me just set up the timer if you give me one second. Okay. Okay, Mr. Barry. Can you hear us, sir?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes, sir.
Congratulations, Bob, and, and congratulations to all of you that have been newly elected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, was that it, Mr. Mr. Barry?
I'm short and sweet. That's, that's all.
All right, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Noel Hollingsworth. Mr. Hollingsworth, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Are you, okay. Noah Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. First of all, I would like to congratulate Mayor Bray Cruz, Councilmember Kaczynski, and Mr. Al Brighton as our third council member. All three are great people, and I'm very happy to have them aboard. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about was the water that flowed across us, and I definitely saw Noah in his ark passing on Griffin Road. And remind the council that maybe with this, we can get our elected officials in Tallahassee and in Washington DC to jump forward on the water retention area that is on the north side of the C-11. And the planning has been done, the plans have been drawn, all of the public hearings have been done. The only thing that's lacking is the money. It is supposed to be, have a pump station on it to draw the water from the, this end of C-11, and put it into the water storage area that goes all the way from the C-11 to the Ronnie Bergeron's property. And from approximately 201 Avenue to US 27. And that is a lot of water it could store. And it would helpfully get rid of some of the flooding that we have to wait to be the last to drag to the ocean. So anyway, that's a thought. Maybe you could run it up the flagpole. Council, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Okay. I don't see anyone else's hands up, mayor.
Okay, great, great. Before, before we move into the rest of the agenda, I did want to, we have an item on the agenda. And it has to do with a resolution, item number 13. I believe it is, yeah, item number 13, which is the item to address the the trim issue that we've been working on for a while. And we had come up with a, a potential resolution that, at the time, I felt was the best option going forward, and so it was put on the agenda just in the last 48 hours or so through communications with the property appraiser's office. A new option has become to light, and I believe it's a much preferred option, much cleaner, much much smoother option, a certificate of correction. So what I would like to propose, if one of the council would indulge me on this, is to remove, to pull the item number 13 from the agenda. I, I don't believe that's the item we really want to take action on. And then I'd like to put together a motion to move forward with this certificate of correction.
Mayor, since item 13 is your item, you and your mayor, so it's a two-fold, you have the absolute right just to announce that it's being pulled from tonight's agenda.
Okay, well, then I, I'll pull it. We've got a better option. Okay, so that item is pulled from the agenda. So, so the certificate of correction, and I, and the reason why I'm bringing this up now, I know it's early in the meeting, but I suspect a lot of folks have called into this meeting specifically to talk about this. So I wanted them, I wanted to be able to address it early, and then we'll, we'll get into the other items. But what I, what I'd like is, well, why don't we do this? Keith, perhaps maybe you can walk through the mechanics of the certificate of correction so that all the council members, I don't know who's, who's aware of this option or not, but the council members will be up to date, and also I'm sure there's residents that are unfamiliar with it as well.
Sure, thank you, mayor. Probably from the minute you got elected, you made it a priority to resolve the fire assessment for this year. And we were dealing with outside legal counsel who was helping direct the town on what it could and could not do. Initially, we all believed that the only options were either a re-trim or some form of resolution to give a rebate back or grant to the residents. After outside counsel reviewed the re-trim option, that really didn't become a legally viable option for multiple reasons. One, a re-trim can only be done in cases of a mistake by, by the municipality in terms of how it classified that property. And in this case, it wasn't a mistake. It was essentially intentional to do it that way by the prior council. And two, it's supposed to be done prior to the actual mailer of the trim notices, really not supposed to be done after the fact when we looked into it. So based upon that, outside counsel did not feel that that was a viable option, which is why we worked together to create a potential grant situation. Because the end game was clear, the end game was to try to make sure that these residents who were seeking relief got the relief in order to make sure they weren't penalized for having barns in Southwest Ranches and other ag structures. Although we were going with the grant option because the re-trim option didn't become valid, we still didn't love that option. There's none of us, you know, and I worked directly hand in hand with the mayor and drafting it with numerous drafts back and forth. None of us loved that option, but it seemed to be the only legal way to get around the conundrum of what transpired. So fortunately, the mayor continued to have discussions with the property appraiser. We had discussions with the Department of Revenue, and after speaking to both of them, it turned out that there is a, a avenue that was unknown at that time known as a certificate of correction. And what that is, is the town can just solely on its own volition advise the Department of Revenue through the, the property appraiser that it is seeking to correct the fire assessment on certain properties, and we can set that number. And it is not as rigid in the Florida statutes as to when that can be done. So once we found out that there was another option that the Department of Revenue would have to follow, Julio, in one day, ran out and inspected all 21 properties at issue. Two property owners didn't let them on their property, but there were 21 properties in total. So he inspected 19 of the 21 properties and provided a report back to the mayor, which has since been forwarded to everyone in the council. Based upon Julio's report, which was chronologically, chronologically went through the properties to determine whether or not they were commercial properties open to the general public, whether or not they were wholesale nurseries, retail nurseries, or just ag properties. The mayor went through the list with, with us and delineated certain properties that we were seeking to give the rebate to or the correction to. So we refined the list down to those properties that, you know, were not commercial in nature in terms of their sales of product, or if it's a landscape business in terms of what they were doing there. And as a result of that, we refined the list down to those that the town were seeking to protect. And, and based on that, and based on the mayor's motion, the goal would be within the week to send over to the property appraiser the list of those that we wanted to correct and to assess them at the residential rate, and I believe it's 62914, if I remember correctly. And so their fire assessment will be corrected. They will get a new bill showing the correction directly from the Department of Revenue. It's not going to come from the property appraiser. It comes from the Department of Revenue, but the property appraiser will help facilitate it, and the direction will be per the town because under the statute, it doesn't necessarily need to state a reason why we're doing it, but just that we're doing it. So we were thrilled when this came to light. I think really it was yesterday, you know, at the 11th hour. And everyone worked hard to get the list complete and to give those residents the relief. So at this point, the council has all received a copy of Julio's list as well as those properties which we have gone through with the mayor to, to give those corrections to. So if the council has the will to offer this relief, the motion would be to approve the issuance of the certificate of correction to those properties that were delineated in the mayor's list that we submitted to the council late yesterday. So mayor, hopefully that was a brief synopsis of what transpired and where we're at today, and why we're all excited that there was an alternative option to get you to where you want it to be.
Perfect, great. Thank you, Keith. That was very helpful. So I think before us is, is two, two items. It's one item, but two, two things that we need to agree upon. One is the breakdown of the individual properties which are commercial, which are agricultural. I did go through it based on the inspections and, and on the properties that we were not able to inspect those designated as agricultural as well, from my view. So basically, in my thought was that from a, I, I would rather err on the side of assuming it's agricultural than to in any way hurt any property that was ag, that was being designated as commercial. So the ones that we knew for sure were commercial, they're paying the right rate. They're paying the commercial rate, so that's, that's fine. But the ones that we want to make a change on, I believe, are the ones that are agricultural. And those were the ones that, that we designated. So, but I want to make sure that we, as a council, are comfortable with that list before we make the actual motion.
I'm looking for input, Steve.
Yes, yes, please.
Mayor, yeah, I'm very comfortable with the list. I realize a couple of properties are not inspected. I'm okay with that. We know, we know they're bona fide. They have the agricultural exemption from the county. It's, you know, I don't want to, I don't think anybody here should throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, you know. And I'm okay with what you've come up with, and actually you've done a pretty good job. And I appreciate the fact that you tackled this head on. And, you know, we're going to be doing the right thing here. So, and I want us to move forward, you know, as part of the discussion, as to what we're going to do about next year at the same time, as soon as we complete this, you know. This is a, this is a relief for, you know, what happened last year, I mean, last November and October, and we need to move forward before I, whatever, what's the deadline? March, I think, or something like that. We've got a, Marty, you know that? Or, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I don't know the exact date, but I do follow exactly what you're saying, and I want to start on this immediately to, to, to resolve the upcoming year, so this does not happen again. I'm with you 100%.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't want it to happen again, and let's fix, let's fix this now while we have the opportunity. And I think, you know, my hat's off to you. Once again, you tackled it head on. It's your first order of business. I'm, I'm sure the town appreciates it. I know I should.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion to, to move forward?
In a moment, I just want to make sure everybody is comfortable with that, that list of properties. Is there anybody that's not comfortable with the way the, the list of properties has been split?
Yeah, Steve, somebody brought up to me one of the properties here that might be classified in error, and I don't know if it's something that we can do, or this is something that has to go back to the property appraiser. I don't want to mention their name now. It's, it's, it's somebody who hasn't come before us, but I'll, I'll let, I'll let Andy know tomorrow. I'm worried about this one because it is classified as agricultural, but when you look at it on the map, property appraisers map, there's nothing growing there, so it might be old. I don't know the right course.
Yeah, I, I think, I'm, like I said, I don't know that we know 100% on all of these. My, my personal feeling is, when in doubt, we're only talking one year. We're talking about the one assessment. And I would err on the side of ensuring that we don't shortchange anyone. If we know it's commercial, we, we don't, you know, we're not, we're not doing anything on those. But if we're not 100% sure, my thought is, let's give a break this one year, and then as we were just talking about, we'll fix it going forward. I really would like to nail this down tonight, to be honest with you.
I'm good with that.
Any other thoughts or comments on the list?
Nothing.
No.
No, nothing else, no. I, I really thank you for the hard work. You've done a good job.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for the hard work.
It was a team effort. It was a team. A lot of folks put in a lot of time. A lot of residents put in a lot of time on this and put their heart and soul in it as well. So, you know, it wasn't easy, but it was a good team effort. So, and thank you all for your support as well.
So I'll make a motion to adopt it.
What?
Adopt the list.
I'm sorry, what was?
How do, how do, how do you want the motion to?
That, that, that would be exactly it, council member. The, the motion would be to approve the town administration's issuance or request for issuance of a certificate of correction for the properties specifically enumerated and identified in the mayor's list, which I codified and sent to the council late yesterday.
That's my motion.
I second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all right. So what I want to do is I do want to open this up to the, the public so that they have an opportunity to weigh in on this. I apologize ahead of time to the public that there wasn't an opportunity to publish this, to get the list out, to do all that upfront. As Keith explained, this was really, came together at the 11th hour. So it's not the way we normally want to do business, but I am committed, and I know the whole council is committed to resolving this tonight and, and moving forward. And so I wanted to get it on the agenda tonight. So with that introduction, if there is any public comment, I would love to hear that now.
Okay, mayor, we have two speakers, three speakers that have raised their hand so far. The first is Fred Cox. Mr. Cox, can you hear us, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
First, I want to thank the new council for taking action. But I guess I want to remind you that we're operating under the But I guess I want to remind you that we're operating under the Florida sunshine law. I don't even know what you're voting on. The list was not given. Steve gave me the list directly. Now you're taking someone off the list. I don't know how I can comment when I don't know who you're approving and not approving. This is real bizarre. I mean, I sincerely appreciate y'all making corrections. The list wasn't furnished. I was contacted eighty-five days ago as a resident if I could help two or three other residents. I thought it was a simple process. It was an error. Couple emails, a couple phone calls, we could fix it. I have called, I have written, I have called Tallahassee, I've gotten letters from the Department of Agriculture. I've had attorneys, I've met with Andy, I've emailed all of you. Here we are at the last minute. It's a surprise. The answer's in the brown paper bag. Mr. Polikoff. Does not the Florida sunshine law govern the fact that we have to see what we're voting on?
All right, Fred will answer that when the comment period is over.
Well, if my seconds aren't up, again, I thank you, but this is as bizarre and troubling as the whole issue. I like a resolution, but. You know. Do your way to do it.
It is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cox. The next speaker is Noel Hollingsworth. Mr. Hollingsworth, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, Noel Hollingsworth, Hundred Ninety-Ninth Avenue. I agree with Fred that it's a little bit bizarre, but it's, you know, one hour past the midnight. And the pumpkin, we're going to turn into a carriage again. So what I'd like to do is, I would like for not the entire list, but those that we're going to give dispensation to. Read those addresses and the property owner or whatever. Not just the folio number. So all of us know who we are giving dispensation to through the council. And I would like for also the second part of this, being part of the motion. That you're going to do right now is that a new fire study be done. And that it's a start effective January first. And the person that's going to be doing it is to be hired before January first. So we don't end up, the day before, it has to be down to the property appraiser's office or tax collector's office. That we have to vote on it then, and it's an eleventh hour and fifty-nine minute situation again. We've done this this time on this fire study, and we did it on the last fire study ten years ago. We didn't learn our lesson. Let's do it right this time and take an entire year to do it. Our ten months and get it right. And everyone knows what's happening and everyone is agreed on what is to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. The next speaker is Ed Segal. Mr. Segal, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, you have two minutes, sir.
Okay, I want to thank all of you for the work on this. Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate you and the amount of time you've spent. Trying to come up with a way to fix this matter, even if it is just for this year. Doing the certificate of correction, I really think is the best thing you can do. So I do commend you on that. I would like to ask though, as to how many properties are we talking about? That that correction is going to be given to. But again, thank you for everything with trying to help the agricultural people in the town of Southwest Ranches. Be able to remain in agriculture, because that's what you're doing. By not giving them an exorbitant fire assessment fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Mayor, there are no more public speakers.
Okay, great. So I do want to, a couple of things. Keith, maybe you can address the sunshine law, whether that's an issue.
Mayor, the sunshine law governs access to meetings. Nothing was done behind closed doors. In fact, I blind copied the council on my email to them to even prevent inadvertent reply all. So it wouldn't be a sunshine law violation or an issue. But I do like what Mr. Hollingsworth said, and if I had it in front of me, I would have read it out. Before you all vote, I think it is a good idea. Agree with him to have Russell read the ten or eleven properties out loud that you all are agreeing on tonight.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I think that's a great idea as well. That makes sense. I don't have, I have the list, I'm just working off my new laptop here, so I don't have the email with it on there, so I don't have it in front of me. Russell, I don't know if, do you have it in front of you where you can?
I do.
I don't see that, I'm trying to look for that right now. Was it sent by Keith or was it sent by Andy?
It was sent by me, Russ, so I can pull it up if you can't find it quickly on my phone.
I do have a total dollar amount and I have the names I've identified and matched up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Marty has the total dollar amount as well as the addresses and names. So Marty, if you could just announce on the record the total dollar amount, especially since those, those funds. Are, are, you know, essentially going to have to be supplemented by the general fund, so it's important to know what that is. And then just Marty, the, the property owners' names and the address. I think there are ten properties in total.
That is correct, Keith. I'll read them in order that I have on the list. Address, one thirty-two zero zero Southwest Twenty-Eighth. I believe it's Court. It's Two Ten Terrace LLC. The amount of reduction is three thousand seventy-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Just perfect landscaping, Inc., fifty-three forty-five Southwest Two Tenth. Reduction, three thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. Wall Street Academy LLC, one four four oh Southwest Ninety-seventh Terrace. One thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. Mauricio Alfonso and Paula Alfonso, or it's Alfonso and Paula Mauricio. One eight five oh one Southwest Fifty-Fourth. One thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and forty-nine cents. William E. and Mary Gay Chappals. Fourteen dollars and two cents. Judith A. Fernandez, oh, excuse me, the address was fifty-nine oh one Southwest One Sixtieth Street. Judith A. Fernandez, sixty-three thirty-one Southwest One Eighty-Fifth. One thousand sixty dollars and seventy-six cents. Marine E. Murphy, nine three three John Henry Court. Nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and nine cents. Todd Flack, Linda Flack, two three six five Southwest One Oh Fifth. One thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Second property, same owners, Tom Flack, Linda Flack, twenty-three sixty-five Southwest One Oh Fifth. Six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. These are all reductions. And James E. Barry, one seven six zero zero Southwest Seventieth. Two thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. Cumulative reductions are fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. That's all, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Marty. All right. I, the only other comment that I had that I wanted to add on to that, Noel, I'm not, I don't know, is we will do a new study. We're going to take a look at the options, but we are definitely going to. Start over with what we're looking here. I don't think this is a minor tweak here and there. This is going to be a relook at it. And we'll decide whether this can be recovered and adjusted. And, and work through this framework somehow, or if we have to do a new study, we'll see. Not ready to, you know, make a. Form an opinion one way or the other, as we sit here today, from my, from my desk anyway. But I'm hopeful that we can. We know and our consultant knows that serious work needs to be done on this, that we missed the mark last year. They have been forthcoming about assisting us with this. And so that is the first plan, is to work and try and, and work with what we've got and fix it and make it right. It needs to be right, you know, these studies last for years, it's not something that we do all the time. What we do here is going to last for years, so it needs to be right. And that's, that's the standard that we're going to go by. So if we can adjust the one we have and save the money from not doing another study, that's what we'll do. If it's not going to work, then my, then we would need to do a study, at least that's, that's my thought on it. Open up to the council if there's other, other thoughts or anything else along this line. Any other comments?
Chris Wallace told us that he would make this right without charging us more, and I think we really need to hold him to that.
Right, I agree a hundred percent.
Let me, let me ask, since we went through the names on the list that were read through. Does the motion need to be amended to include those names?
No, no, we, we made it clear, councilman, that it was the mayor's list, so we just read the list in the record.
All right.
Okay. Seeing no further comment, we have a first and a second on this. If we can call, call roll.
Councilmember Albrighton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harton?
Yes.
Mayor Brad Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, very good, thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you all.
See, thanks for leading this. I mean, we were kind of going in a bit of circles as a council for a while there. And thanks for grabbing the bull by the horns, expressing leadership.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the board reports. Do we have any board reports this evening?
We have George Milton Morris raising his hand, Mayor.
Okay, great.
Okay, George, can you hear us?
Yeah, how you guys doing?
Pretty good, you have a few minutes.
Yeah, congratulations to all the new council members, doing a great job, it's great to see. George Morris, Chair of the Drainage Board. Obviously, this last week, we've had an unprecedented amount of rain, nearly twenty inches, I believe it broke the hundred-year record. I drove around town looking at current and past projects, they seem to be functioning well. Obviously, with the twenty inches of rain, Dykes unfortunately was closed once again. I, I, I think everybody can, you know, see that, you know, it was inevitable. I did drive up and down through different neighborhoods and Sunshine Ranches, you know, east and west. Southwest Ranches, you know, Dean's Ranches, et cetera, and, you know, as everybody knows, a lot of streets were flooded. I've been out here for thirty years, there's been streets that I've never seen flooded that were flooded at this time. Overall, the, you know, I guess South Broward, Central Broward, we're doing their best to try and drain as much as it could be drained. The water was flowing, the water did drain, obviously. When Dykes was closed and under a couple of feet of water, for the most part, I was out there, I was in communication with Rod. I was looking at the swells and improvements that we had done. And the water was actually flowing, you know, towards this intended target, so that was a very good thing to see, at least the water draining. Although it did flood. As everybody knows, it was, you know, very. You know, bad flooding in Sunshine Branches, a lot of the intersections were flooded, like Hancock and Larray. David Kozinski, you know, I had went to that corner that we had talked about in the past regarding, you know, flooding there. Of course, it was flooded, the lakes were flooded over the roads from east to west and north to south. But I've since been through the neighborhoods and seen that it has gone down. And I'm looking forward to continuing to serve on the drainage board and make more improvements and do what I can to help out. So that's pretty much my report. The last meeting we, we did not have, it was pushed over into December. So there's nothing really new to report, other than the current projects we have ongoing. Thank you.
Great, thank you, George. Any other board reports?
There are no other board reports, Mayor. Christina Brownlaw, I'm sorry, from the School Education Advisory Board is on. Christina, can you hear us?
Hi, yes, hi, everyone, how are you?
Very good.
Hi, Chris.
And may I start it off with, congratulations, as many have said before me. Very refreshing and very welcome and, and watching this meeting has been a true pleasure, so thank you, gentlemen. Per the board, we are setting some tentative dates for events and of course, looking at things virtually. So looking at, again, having the seek run in late February. Thinking about the pageant and we're probably looking at an April date for that. And our budget, if I'm correct, and Debbie Green might pop in, not our budget, our monies to date. I believe we have about five thousand dollars in the scholarship, about that right now. And our HOA, the Sunshine Ranches HOA donated a thousand last night, so we get to bump that up. So that was very refreshing. We're reaching out to donors through letters and of course, virtually. And looking to do some online, virtual online auctioning. So we thank you for your support in the past and of course, going forward. And it's a pleasure to do this, it's very exciting. The kids are excited, there's lots of buy-in. And also, we're very excited about the youth council that is being established. So thank you all.
Great, thank you, Chris. Any other board reports?
Mayor, we don't have any other board reports, but there is somebody that still has their hand raised. I don't know what you want me to do about that, Mr. Cox, I don't believe he's on a board, but.
All right, well, let's, let's, that's fine, let's go ahead, call on, call on Fred.
Mr. Cox, can you hear us?
Yes. I guess I was going to speak on behalf of the fire study board, since Steve, our chairman, is not on the board any longer. And I was vice chairman. And I may stand corrected, it wasn't a violation of the Florida sunshine law, that it's a violation of public records. Steve knows I've asked for the records. Andy Burns knows I've asked for the records, Russell Munoz knows I've asked for the records. And here's the whole thing. I thought we were going to treat each other better, starting tonight. You took the oath of office. You're going to follow the laws of Florida. I'm not a bad guy, I'm not an enemy. I, I've worked on this, I, I've made an effort on this. Just treat me for a little bit of common decency and respect. Sending me the list prior to the meeting would not have been too much effort. Keith sent it to you, it's a public record. Thank you very much, good luck, thanks for the corrections.
Thank you, Fred. Any other board reports?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I did want to put in a little, maybe a quick commercial. That in the next meeting, we will be selecting the new, our appointees for the boards. And so this is a great opportunity for those that are in town, that are, are not on one of the boards. To be able to say, you know, I'd like to participate. And we would love to, love to add some members to those boards and, and get more people involved. The more people that we get involved, the stronger our town is, the more ideas we get. The, the, the greater our ability to really reflect those things that our community wants to get done. So if you've been thinking about potentially serving on one of the boards, you can see all the boards on the town website. They're listed there and there's a short description of what each boards, which each of the boards do. If you've been thinking about this, this is, this is the time, this is where the opportunity arises, where you can join those boards. And get involved and. And meet some great folks and, and really have an avenue to contribute to the town, so. I would encourage, if that's, if that's something you're thinking about, I would encourage you to check out the website and potentially fill out the application and. And let us know which board you'd be interested in, we'd, we'd love to hear that. Okay. With that, council member comments?
I'll go.
Okay, thanks.
For change.
To the machine, Gary.
Absolutely. First off, I would like to congratulate Vice Mayor Hartman. We did flip a coin, you won. By the way, you weren't in the room, but, you know, that. Anyway, I'm kidding aside, you're going to be a great vice mayor, and. I want to say congratulations to our new mayor, Steve, and Councilman Jim, and Councilman David. You guys ran a really good campaign, and. He prevailed, and my congratulations go out to you. All throughout town, I was really. Spoke volumes when it was very interesting how, the day after the election, all the. The signs were coming down, the level of cooperation was unbelievable. You know, it was, in spite of all the rain and all the, you know, weather we had. Everybody was taking everybody else's down sign down, and we're giving them back to everybody properly. It was kind of refreshing to see that, I, it's, it's a small thing, but it was just kind of refreshing to see that. I also want to thank. Our former mayor Doug McKay, and Councilman Dee Schroeder, and Councilman Dulce Abnison. For a great job that they did, and their time that they put in, I would like to thank them very, very much. Just a note, I need to correct the record, on the last meeting. I, I spoke about the LPR cameras that we're going to put at the front entrance of Rolling Oaks. And after, and as you all know, I. You know, I'm a glutton for punishment, I watched the meeting again after it was on YouTube. And I noticed I was saying I ninety-five, because we're going to put cameras. And the amazing part was either, I don't know, the mistake I made, or the fact that nobody stopped me. On it, but it, I meant to say I seventy-five, which, you know, bisects our town, so I just want to correct that on the record. So I did not I ninety-five. As you all know, we've been, since the rains have come in, we've been inundated with mosquitoes. That has. You know, it's, it's, it's a thing that happens every time we flood, and this was, you know. Colossal, I, I just can't describe how, how bad the mosquitoes are out there so fast. And we've been on the phone daily with Broward County mosquito control, we're trying to set up. An aerial drop on the. Spraying of the town, right now, if you call them at Broward County, and I believe the number is on our website. I don't have it unfortunately with me at the moment, but they will actually come to your street. They were here in Rolling Oaks the other morning, I heard at five AM. They run around before all the traffic comes on, and you can hear the, the fogger working, and it's a very large thing. And they do a, a pretty good job, but, you know, like anything else, it knocks them down for a little while, then they come back, so. Make the phone call, they respond to that very well. The rain amount was unbelievable, every other day, you know, a hundred year rain, I think this is the third one I've had, but never. Since I've been here, but never, never been this bad. And it was unbelievable, I, I, I didn't go down Sterling Road, but I saw it from a volunteer. Which I think was the only dry road in the town at that point, day two or day, day one. And Sterling Road disappeared, thank God we had the guardrail up, because then you could tell where the canal was. That was really. You, you know, it really paid off in dividends, all the canal work and the. The, the, the guardrail work that we got, and, and the monies that we procured over the years. From the state, I mean, it all paid off right then and there. I mean, you could tell where the road was, and where the, where the canal was, because I'm pretty sure we would have had a lot of cars going into the canal. No doubt in my mind after seeing that, and we'll continue on with, you know, the guardrails on Hancock and wherever, wherever else they're needed. As it, as it becomes available, as funding becomes available. And I know everybody's got a lot to say tonight with the new candidates, so I'm going to just end it right now with. Just to mention that we have the Holiday Lights Contest. Going on by the Rural Arts Board, and the forums are on the town website. And they need to be filled out by the seventh of December, and put on for judging, so. And once again, congratulations to. The, the council, and I look forward to working with everybody for the next several years. Thank you, Mayor, that's it.
Thank you.
I'll jump in. So a couple of things I want to go through, first, again, I want to congratulate our new council members. I'm very glad all of you have won, I've worked with all of you as volunteers, I know you well, I understand your positions on most town issues, because. As friends, we've talked about it during your campaigns, you've talked about it, and I, I think we're. We, we have a lot of the same position, so I'm, I'm glad to serve with like-minded individuals. I trust and respect all of you, and I value your feedback, so I really look forward to serving the community with all of you. I also wanted to congratulate State Representative Bartleman, I mean. Robin, I've known you a long time, and I'm, I'm so excited for you, and we will be reaching out. We're always looking for help, any way we can get free money, so we'll, we'll talk. There's also a couple of things I want to give you a ring about, just for a one-on-one conversation, so look forward to giving you a call sometime next week, Robin. Let's see, we have another elected official on the phone, Fred Siegel's with us. Fred was just re-elected for, I believe, the third time on the Broward Soil and Water Conservation Board. Maybe next time Fred talks, he can explain that a little better to everybody, but. He's, he's been at this for quite a while, and prior, he was part of the Broward Farm Bureau, so. He understands the needs of the nurserymen and the agriculture folks, the equestrians, so. I'm glad you got re-elected, Fred, thank you. So let me, let me move on, I've got another congratulation to, to pass along. Vanessa Redmond, I'm not sure if she's on tonight, I didn't see her name, but Marty, bring back her good wishes. The reason I want to wish her congratulations, she's our procurement specialist, anything the town. Buys over a certain amount, and any contracts that. That we sign, it's her primary responsibility to. To work, though, she's our procurement specialist. Well, I want to congratulate her, because she just won a scholarship from the NIGP. Institute for Public Procurement, NIGP is the National Institute for Government Purchasing. And they're basically a group that's out there nationwide to support. Government procurement professionals through training, research, I mean, it's, it's an excellent program, and they also. Provide the certifications for, for people in our industry. For things like procurement and other types of, of procurement activities that. They provide, so congratulations. And, you know, enough about NIGP, I want to focus on her real quick. The key aspect of our role is, like I said, procurement specialist to save town, the town some money. I want to give her a special thank you for applying and winning the scholarship. To cover her training, because otherwise, if she didn't do this, the town would have paid for it, so thank you very much, Vanessa. Alright, so let's see. I want, I want to spend a few minutes with all of you, talking about something that, Steve, I've actually heard you bring up in the past. And, you know, I, I'd like to re-initiate this. If you look at the Town Charter for Southwest Ranches, it requires the town to preserve and protect our rural lifestyle. We have two charter amendments for five oh votes needed for changing zoning, land use, and for the sale of any town-owned property. These were passed by a two-thirds majority of our town back in eighteen. Now, I ran on the platform of protecting our rural lifestyle, and I know the three of you who were just recently elected did as well. I think we've got community support to develop the policies necessary to keep us rural. While respecting ownership rights. I, I think everybody understands the things that the town is going through right now with developers and such. We have to respect their rights, but we also have to protect our community, so. You know, I'd like to move forward on, on coming up with some ideas. And I think the way to go about that, and also. Managing our talent a little differently. Is, is what I'd like to propose, when I was in government. We did strategic planning every year, when I, you know, most of my career in the private sector. We've done strategic planning to figure out where we're going to be next year and through the next five years. I'd like to propose it here, I think. That if we develop a stake, you know, a strategic plan. And we use stakeholder input from our community and our government leaders, and I'm really talking about Andy and. Russell and Marty, and come up with. What all think are important for the community, I'd like to see. Us work through a plan, and then facilitate these activities and implementation. And kind of the, what, what we've done in the past in, in my professional life, and. And honestly, bound, I want to bounce this off of all of you, because there's no correct way to do strategic planning. But, you know, what we've done in the past, and what I'd suggest here is, we have a council retreat. Andy and I have talked about doing this maybe on a Saturday, where we can sit down and go through everything. That we think is important to the town as the council. And we also need to hear from our senior administration in finance and. Clerk leaders, because that's not the right term, clerical leader, that's not the right term for you either, Russell, but we'll get it right.
It's okay.
Yep, in any case, you know, we need to sit down and discuss our ideas. Come up with some recommendations and create kind of a wishlist of what we'd like to see. Either change in our laws, or how we administer our town, you know, basically, high-level things between all of us on, and the direction we'd like to go. Then, you know, they can lay out a roadmap of the resident services. And activities that we'd like to address based on that meeting. From there, I also think we need to get resident feedback via surveys, or. You know, from the HOA meetings, or, you know, this, there's, there's a number of different ways we can solicit. But also, I think we probably would want to have. Feedback at Town Hall, encourage people to bring things up during public comment, or. You know, again. You know, we, we could do it in a workshop format, where we could discuss, and they could discuss, but independent of that original work, that original. Retreat I talked about. Then, you know, based on the feedback that all come up with, all the stakeholders, the community. The, the administration, finance, etc. Then I'd love to see them come up with, you know, do some analysis on the feedback and come up with categories. And start bringing the stuff all together, so we can discuss it. In a, you know, kind of in a structured format. Once we're finished, once they're finished with the analysis, we should probably do a visioning session. Based on the feedback that they've analyzed and the data they've provided back to us. So we can start creating a direction, other than what, what is kind of the default direction. And then from there. We can all develop a strategic plan with goals and key performance indicators, so that we know if we're making progress. I know, Steve, you brought up goals a couple of years ago, four or five years ago. You talked about them through the years, that's a part of this, and that's kind of what I was pulling you in on when I, I mentioned it earlier. I'm, I'm sure in your world, you go through strategic planning every year, every couple of years as well, I mean, that's, that happens in IT. But just, just moving on through this. Once we've, we understand, you know, once we've developed a plan with goals, we'll review, prioritize, and adopt. The admin and finance can implement over an agreed period of time with commitments. Then, you know, finally. We, we, we should get frequent reports. On the planning progress, next steps, and then report any impediments that the council can remove. And then finally, what I would suggest is, we, we don't want to wait a long time on this, I mean. This, this needs to be looked at, if, if you guys agree that it's an approach to go, but I think we ought to have this all wrapped up. By, I don't know, the end of January, the end of February, so that we can act on our plan and carry it forward. I just want to open it up, Steve, you know, for ideas, or whether this is a crazy idea. And I just have, it's up to you, brief discussion.
Sure, sure, thanks Bob for bringing that up, I do have some definite thoughts on it. Before I throw out my thoughts, you know, I, I'm supportive of what you're saying. I do have some thoughts on it, I don't know if there's any other council members that want to weigh in first?
Steve, I'd like to say thank you to all the residents of Southwest Ranches that took the time to go vote. We had a record turnout this year, and, and I'm very pleased that I was elected. I have so many people to thank, that I, I'd, we'd be here another two hours, I'm sure, I just had a wonderful support team. Everybody that I spoke to, whether they voted for me or didn't vote for me. Were positive, they gave me feedback, and I am honestly blessed that my wife. Put up with me, she promised not to divorce me the first year, I'm not sure what will happen the second year, but. You know, I want to thank each and every one of you, those that didn't vote for me, as I said in Town Hall earlier, when we were sworn in. Please reach out, touch bases with me, and let's see if we can't mend fences, if there's fences to be mended. And make this next four years, along with Steve, our mayor, and our council members, make this a great year for the town of Southwest Ranches, thank you.
I guess I'm up.
Hey, Steve, I wasn't finished, but I'll go at the end, after you make your comments.
Yeah, I, I was, I was actually kind of asking for further feedback on the strategic planning idea, but that's, that's fine. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get back to it, Bob, I promise.
Yep. So let, let me just wrap up my comments. Regarding the flooding.
Before you do that, before you do that, let me just jump in, because I did want to have, I have some comments. Based on that strategic that I did want to make, I just was going to open up, see if anybody else had any thoughts as well. So I, I, I do support what you're saying, I think it's, I think it's an excellent way to go forward, I, I'm, I'm a firm believer that. That goals are critical, if you're going to make progress in a, in a particular direction. It's important to have goals out there that we can measure ourselves against and, and be moving towards. So I, I'm a hundred percent behind what you're saying, the only, the only caveat I think I would say is, to me. The first step would be, it's been a long time since we really have gone out to the residents. And, and requested their input in, in the form of some sort of a questionnaire or survey. And, and I'd like to get that first, to be honest with you, I'd like to, I'd like to build on that, I know part of the campaign. We, we, we did a survey, and, and, and I got great, you know, great results from that, but it wasn't. You know, it wasn't on the topic specifically that you're talking about, some of it would be, but not all of it, so. But I think that would be the starting point, and then with that feedback, and looking at, you know. Then the council's feedback and building on that, as you said, I think is, that, that makes, that's exciting to me to, to walk down that path.
Yeah, Steve, I'm, I'm really thinking that we need to be as broad as possible, I know during the campaign. And prior, there were a lot of concerns about traffic and speeding, Jim was in the middle of that, I know that there was a lot of concerns in David's. District as well, there was a lot on Facebook about the people speeding, I, I, I'm, I'm just saying, let's lay it all out, anything we can think of, and then we decide on whether we need change or not, and. You know, if we do need change, if there are financial requirements, we need to get that in the budget and continue moving forward.
Perfect.
Good, I'll work with Andy on this, he and I had spoken about this a couple of times now, and. Since we all can't work together, except for at the council meetings. I'll, I'll, I'll take this and move forward, and what I'll do is, in the next meeting, I'll try to give you guys an update. And if, if Andy wants to chime in, be my guest.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor, and congratulations on that, by the way. Yeah, Vice Mayor and I have had several conversations on this, and, and we've, we've had robust discussion as far as fleshing it out. And we'll need to put kind of a sequence together. But I think it's, it's really imperative with, with a new council to really get together and, and. Let you guys air some things out, and, and, and so the retreat, I would be a big, big component of. To allow you to air that out, and use some of that feedback potentially to design the resident survey.
Yes, I jumped in about your survey or your questionnaire you sent out, I thought that was a great idea.
Can I jump in, Mayor?
Yeah, yes, please.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like a great idea, Bob. I, I, and, and I think Steve is spot on with getting the residential input. You know, obviously, we're going to want to, like we did last time, and I believe it was, what, ten years ago, maybe more. Uh, you know, obviously we're going to want to, uh, like we did last time, and I believe it was what, 10 years ago, maybe more. No, maybe less, okay.
It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while. Um, where we did, uh, you know, and, and we got a reaffirmation of what, what are all our goals were and it, it came back very positive. Uh, and now that Andy's sitting there shaking his head, it's drawing my memory now. That he, when he did that. Um, but yeah, I believe, uh, I believe it's a, it's a great opportunity to prioritize um, what our goals uh, should be uh, throughout town. I know uh, law and order is a big one. Uh, the agricultural aspect is, is even e- equal to that. And uh, so I think we need to uh, you know, sit down and have a, have a session where we all do a roundtable, for lack of a better way of saying it. And then uh, get the resident input on it. And then, you know, uh, decide how it's going to go with that. The only, the only thing I would think of, um, Bob, is that maybe your timetable is a little too aggressive. It might take a little longer than that uh, to get everybody, to get all the mailings out, get them back in. Um, I, I wouldn't want to rush through this. I'd want to, you know, if it takes till June or May, you know, so be, you know, something like that, you know. That, that's my, only my suggestion. Yeah, at this point. I'll be quiet now.
I was setting a goal for our administrator. Good, good. Alright, so thank you, thank you, Gary. Let me, let me finish up with my comments real quick so, so we can move on. So I'm not going to go through all the flooding. I, I went through it uh, as well. When the rain kind of slowed down, uh, I forget what day it was now. What was it, Monday or so last week, Tuesday? Uh, I drove around to being the, uh, being on the drainage committee for over 10 years and the chair for a long time. You know, I've, we've talked about a lot of projects over the years and we've implemented a lot. So I, I drove around to the projects and it was pretty interesting because uh, for example, one of our major flooding roads was 180, 185th. And I drove that road and where we put our culvert in, in the dog leg a couple of years ago, I think that project was done, what Rod, two years ago, when we put the drainage into the canal, South Broward, and we did. Um, that was the deepest water I drove through because it's at the lowest point. And it was very interesting driving around because, you know, I got tons of phone calls throughout the rain events saying my property is flooding, please make the town pump. So I was trying to make people aware that, you know, South Florida Water Management is the only one who really does major pumping around here. South Broward does on 172nd. That's how they drain parts of uh, Rolling Oaks. But the majority of the pumping, and we're talking millions of gallons a minute, is done over at the uh, uh, the S9 pumping station out over at Holiday Park. And you got to realize, because people were calling me, why aren't the town turning on the pumps? We don't have any pumps. We convey water through our streets and swales and all that to the South Broward and Central Broward Drainage District. They have different names, but South Broward and Central Broward, uh, they convey the water to the Griffin Road Canal in one case with a pump, but mostly with gravity. And then South Florida pumps it to the Everglades uh, under normal circumstances, but they also let it flow to the ocean. I understand the gate that's at 100th was open for two days, so some of this water could be moved to the ocean rather than in the Everglades. Because if you've been out to the Everglades, if you go to Holiday Park, the only thing out of the water right now is their new back parking lot and uh, the building where the uh, they sell food and tickets and all that. Everything else at Holiday Park right now is flooded because so much water is going into the Everglades. So they're, they were leaving some of it into the ocean. But our, our projects, I went around specifically to the ones I know we've done. I was very happy to see that they were either flowing um, on the second and third day or the water was still, but that's because the canals were over, everything was overflowed. You know, until they pumped down Griffin Road, our canals on our streets don't go down. And then they go down, as fast as they go down, then uh, our properties drain. So Steve, are you still flooded or, or has it subsided on your property? Because I know earlier in the week you were still flooded.
Actually, the back of my property is still flooded, so.
So we have more work to do on the drainage.
We do. We do. We do.
Good. But I, I appreciate the reports that George and others made as well. Uh, let me talk about mosquito control, and I know Gary touched on this. Again, we don't, town, the town doesn't have any mosquito control capabilities. That's all taken care of by the county. Um, the county sends trucks and airplanes where they get the most calls, the way I understand it. So there's a website for uh, for the mosquito control. I put it on Facebook earlier this week. Um, if you Google the uh, Broward mosquito control, you'll find it, but that's, those are the people to contact. And I know people have been calling them left and right. I had the truck come pass last night and I had the truck come pass this morning. So people are definitely letting them know. I don't know how they dictate what uh, what, what they use to determine uh, whether they send an airplane around. Man, if there was ever time for an airplane, I got it. I got mosquitoes in my yard. They're an inch across. I've never seen them this big before. So anyway, let me move on. I, I wanted to make a note to the, our equestrian community. I saw on Facebook that people are out there slaughtering horses again, not in our neighborhood, fortunately. But down in Redland, somebody's horse was uh, murdered and stolen basically on the 14th. So when it happened down there, back about, what was it, eight or nine years, seven or eight years ago? We had horses, a horse in our town, it might have been more, I don't recall anymore. But we had a horse out west that was slaughtered for meat as well around the same time. So I don't know if it's the same people, who knows? But just keep your eyes open, keep your eyes open on your neighbor's property as well. If you see somebody who doesn't belong, call 911, let them explain. Alright, um, so let's, let's talk about something else that I wanted to bring up. We have to um, assign council members or the mayor to um, two different organizations within Florida. One is the MPO and the other is the Broward slash Florida League of Cities. Um, the MPO decides how our F dot construction and maintenance financial resources are prioritized and used in Broward County. So any new road construction, if we want to get uh, the intersection of Griffin Road and Flamingo ever fixed, that's done through the MPO. So we've got that and we've got the Florida League of Cities. Florida League of Cities is uh, an organization that lobbies the Florida Legislature. So Robin, you'll be hearing from them. And, and, and I know you're aware of them because you've been, you've been a part of this for a long time, but in any case, um, the League of Cities, and this is something that we, we really need to look at. The League of Cities has its action agenda for every year. The number two item on their action agenda is annexation. And it, the way it reads right now, it looks like it's rural communities annexing in unincorporated Broward areas or I should say unincorporated areas, not just here in Broward. But the challenge, and this is one of the things I want to call you about, Robin, is that we've got local cities that are trying to grab land from us every year. And every year they stop us from changing things. So we're, we're probably going to have to rely on you for some help here.
Bob, I have your cell, so I'll reach out to you tomorrow and we'll go over the land and we'll, we'll have a meeting so I understand what the issues are, where the land is and what I can do to help you.
Perfect. Thank you. Alright, um, so in, in terms of the MPO and the Florida League of Cities, I think I asked Andy to send around the League of Cities info that we got this week. You guys will automatically be members of the Florida League of Cities, all elected officials are. Uh, and there's also people that are appointed to it, but uh, I, I just wanted to point it out now. We need somebody for MPO and we need somebody for League of Cities. I'd like to volunteer for MPO. I'd like to start going to those meetings and try to get some things to change. Um, but we, we, and, and that's up to you. I don't know if we have to make a motion or how that works. Um, and then we also need somebody for Florida League of Cities, and that's a bit more of a challenge because their meetings, their general meetings occur when our council meetings occur.
Do you need a motion?
I don't know. I mean, I haven't done this before, right?
I think we should have a motion. Keith, does you uh?
You need a motion if you're making an appointment uh, for an individual in the town to serve in the capacity.
Right.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we uh, uh, nominate or put uh, Vice Mayor Bob Hartman on the uh, MPO Board.
Jim, second that. Thank you, Jim. Yeah, that's great. And Bob, I know you've got a strong background in that area as well, so I think that's a fantastic appointment. Yeah, it's a great fit and thank you for uh, taking that on. Any uh, further discussion on that? Hey, Russell, if you could call the roll.
Certainly, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Al Britton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Um, so, so long as we're on that, uh, Bob, if I can interrupt your uh, your session here, um, Florida League of Cities, is there uh, is there someone that would be willing to serve on that? I, I think they have other, is it, I think they have other meetings, uh, not, I think their regular meeting may be conflicting with this, but there may be other options to get together as well.
Did you say Florida or did you mean Broward?
Broward, sorry.
Uh, yeah.
Broward, thank you, thank you.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll nominate Jim Albritton as our representative.
I think Jim would make an excellent representative.
A second.
Thank you, Bob.
Do you third that, Jim?
You okay with that?
I'll forth it, yes. I'll be number four. I know David's going to say yes, I'll be number four.
Andy, maybe what you can do is um, connect, once we vote on it, connect Jim with the people over there so he can understand and, and, you know, come up to speed on League of Cities.
I, I'll, I'll put, I'll put Jim in touch with, or Mary-Lou Tai in touch with Jim and uh, she'll be able to bring him up to speed. And I'll also let Greg Stewart know that she'll be taking over the MPO role.
Thank you.
Okay.
We need to vote on it.
Yep. Any further discussion on that? Alright, Russ, you can call the roll.
Councilmember Al Britton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Absolutely.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that.
Alright.
Alright, Bob, floor is back to you.
Yep, yep. So last thing is, and Steve, you touched on it, which can shorten up my, my pitch. The town advisory boards. In my mind, one of the many things that makes Southwest Ranches a unique place to live is resident participation in our town government. Our town was founded by volunteers. It's been led by volunteers and looking at the people that are on the council now, again, it's now directed by volunteers. Um, the town has six advisory boards that provide for resident involvement and feedback. The good thing is, and this is the part that kept me going to the, the board meetings for years. The, the, the council gives the boards due consideration and appreciation for the hard work and the valuable comments these boards, you know, provide us, the council. It, it's tremendous. I mean, there was a point in time where anything that was related to, uh, well, I, I won't get into the past, but um, you know, it, these boards are what makes Southwest Ranches unique and, and makes it special because it, a lot of cities don't have any resident input other than a council or commission meeting, so this, this is a great thing. Uh, and we use the feedback continuously on council decision-making. So, you know, these aren't coffee and cake boards, right, Noel? These are boards that get things done, that address things, and as you heard with the fire fees, take their time, take consideration and, and try to get, get through some of these really big challenges. Our boards deal with things that are that are serious, they're serious topics. And we, the council all attend these meetings. It's rare and I, you know, it's, it's rare the people, the council doesn't show up. We, we get the feedback from you guys. So at this, as Steve mentioned, this is the time of year where council makes appointments and after elections particularly, you know, we, we generally have more board seats open. So if you were a family member interested in volunteering on a town board, hopefully you're finding this information helpful. If you'd like to be considered for a board uh, position, fill out an application. And again, it's on the town website. If you look at advisory boards on the light, left-hand side and keep clicking, you'll find the application. There's some policy information, there's a handbook so you can get familiar and fill out the application and return it to Town Hall as per the application. If you have any questions about any of these boards, please feel free to give me a call. Um, you know, Google my name or, or go to the town website. I'm out there, 954-801-1758. Be happy to answer any questions. And uh, finally, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Great, thank you, Bob.
I have one.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
I have a question, uh, Bob or Andy, uh, you, the sitting board members now, do they fill out another application every year? Or is the application from before current and uh, they're asked if they want to sit on the board?
Yeah, our, our, our nor, normal policy is the, the liaisons to each board will reach out to their board members to ask them if they are interested in continuing service or if they want to go off the board. And so you'll have, that information will be provided to you, the list of the boards and, and who wishes to continue to serve. So we don't normally ask them to fill out another application. In those cases, no.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, David.
Alright.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Scott got a few comments. Uh, first of all, congratulations, Steve. Um, you know, we sat, uh, my dog's barking. Uh, we sat together at uh, Bingo. Um, and you and I discussed um, future plans and um, looks like they came to fruition.
Yes, they did.
Congratulations. Uh, congratulations to uh, Vice Mayor. Congratulations to you, Jim. Uh, we spent a lot of time in the parking lot waving. And um, thank you, thank you, everybody for helping uh, take down my signs when um, there were times that I couldn't help with, help with that. Um, on to um, the advisory boards. Um, I can guarantee there's going to be some new people up there. Um, I've been contacted by several people um, who have not served on the advisory boards who uh, wish to um, participate. So um, we will be um, seeing new faces on those advisory boards. Uh, let's see. One of the issues that I um, uh, wanted to, um, see if it could be explored as the uh, town is going to be updating the website is um, if the feasibility of putting all of the links for the uh, council meetings on a separate page. Um, so if somebody wants to go, public wants to look at something, I think it brings um, more transparency to uh, what happens in the meetings. If there's a link that a public member can go to and just say, okay, this is the meeting from that date, this is the meeting from that date. Um, I just want to know how, with the feasibility of that would be. Uh, let's see, moving on. Um, last night, uh, Sunshine Ranches held their uh, uh, Homeowners Association meeting and um, I stepped down as president and uh, handed the uh, presidency over to Chris Brownlow, who is now the president. One of the things that we uh, we voted on a couple of things. Uh, $1,000 was given to the scholarship fund, uh, fund from the HOA funds and that was a um, a motion that was made by Mr. Bob Parker. Um, and for three years in a row, Mr. Parker has made that motion and it has always passed uh, unanimously. And um, we also approved funding for um, our maintenance of our entranceways. Um, as you uh, drive around, you'll see there's two entranceways into Sunshine Ranches, one on Hancock at Griffin. And then there's one that is uh, on Flamingo at uh, Sterling, and that one's actually located in Cooper City. Uh, so um, that, that has been maintained by uh, one of our uh, H-way members, Cindy Samartino, and um, so the H-way provided funding to uh, help offset the expenses with maintaining those, making sure that they look beautiful, the plants are healthy, and she does some really nice decorations that uh, go with the uh, various times. And uh, speaking of the um, entranceways, um, there was a couple of council meetings ago, there was an issue where Sunshine Ranches uh, through some of our members, um, the McBrides were a substantial contributor, uh, that we were having these plaques, these bronze plaques with various names of the pioneers, um, that we had uh, made. that we had made a decision. It was a, it was actually an idea that Chris Brownlow had came up with, that she wanted to, we have some plaques up there that actually went up there without any approval at all. They were just done by the previous president before me. They wanted to give, just recognize people that contributed to our community. And Chris suggested we include some other names. And we came up with the name, the pioneers. And we specifically made the subject as an opt-in. If somebody wanted their name put on there, they would have to opt in. We, we wouldn't just go in there and put everybody on there. And the rationale behind that was there are residents who absolutely did not want their name on there. So, we took the position that if you wanted your name on there, we published the announcement in the Wagler and we spoke with every name, either myself or Chris spoke with every person whose name was on there. The plaque was at the swearing in ceremony on a table over there for people to look at. And there's still blank spaces at the name, at the bottom, so we can add names to people who maybe didn't catch the publication in the Wagler or subsequently wanted their name on there. So, we did leave spaces on there to add names. But the whole, the whole gist behind this was to recognize some of the founders in Sunshine Ranches who had lived and contributed into our area for thirty-plus years. I think it was maybe two years ago, we came up with the idea. But there was a meeting, maybe two or three meetings ago, where this was addressed and we were told that, we were, we were instructed, we couldn't put the plaque up. And, you know, I tried to enter in that meeting and explain the whole concept behind it because some of the money, there was a very little bit of HOA money was put into it. Most of it came from actual neighbors who contributed. And it's very interesting that, like, like I said, the McBride, they contributed money to this and their names aren't even on there. And that was just very, very welcome to, to want to contribute to the neighborhood. So, it was something that we really believed in and we thought it would look really nice on the entranceways. It was something that, I was hoping that maybe we can get, get those revisited by this council. And aside from that, I think basically done with my comments, I just want to thank everybody.
Can I jump in here for a second?
Absolutely, sure.
Yeah, David, yeah, regarding the plaque, it, it, that's a very noble thing. And I think the, your ability to add names is the key thing on this. Because nobody wants to be, you know, nobody wants to be left out. And I think the, the HOA's ability to add the names is a big plus. I don't think that was recognized several months ago, I want to say, for lack of a better way of saying it. And it, it sounds like a good idea, plus the ability to add a second plaque if you wanted to, with, with more names. You know, I, I, I would, I would think you could move forward with this, you know, and then have the HOA implement. I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in.
Yeah, just a quick comment, David, thank you for doing this. You know, we're talking about a lot of people that made a significant contribution to our town. I mean, being a pioneer is important, they were first. So, thank you, thanks for bringing this to fruition.
I, I, I believe that there was a motion and a resolution that was, or a motion that carried the day that said we were prohibited from doing that. And I just, I think I would need to have something like that to put it up at the Hancock entranceway because that's actually town property, Town Right Away.
Was there a motion?
I, I was trying to remember that as Councilmember Kuzinski was speaking. Russell, what happened there? I remember this was Councilmember Schroeder, Vice Mayor Schroeder's issue. Did she make a, a motion or what?
Oh, yeah.
Does anyone recall what happened?
I, I don't think we had a formal resolution on it. It may have been something that we captured in the minutes, I'll have to review that for that particular.
I think it was referred back to the Rural, Rural Public Art Board to review. But, but nobody on the council at the time had seen the plaque. If it was done as a simple motion, then this council can do by simple motion the, the exact thing that it wishes to do. A resolution would not be required. So, Councilmember Kuzinski, you know, although a, a little out of protocol, if you'd like to make a motion, at least we can get things going on this one.
Yeah, I, I would like to make the motion to allow Sunshine Ranches H-way, since I'm no longer the president, to go ahead and be able to put the plaques up specifically to one on the Town Right Away at Hancock and Griffin. The other one, the Cooper City, we did kind of comply and adhere to the, to the motion just out of respect to the town.
One second.
Yeah, David, I appreciate you bringing that up. I think that's really important to recognize those individuals that, you know, it was a lot different when they came out here. You hear stories about how far they had to drive just to get groceries and they only went once every week or two because it was such an adventure to do it. And, and we talk about flooding that we saw this week. Well, we may, they may not have had the, the volume of rain, but the, 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 the way the roads were and the lack of drainage and, you know, the lack of the ability for, to just pick up the phone and have Broward County come out with mosquito control, none of that was here, you know? So, it was, it was a different lifestyle. And it's great to have the opportunity to recognize those individuals that really started it all and pioneered it all. So, thank you for bringing that up, I certainly supported a thousand percent.
Call a question?
Did we actually get a first and a second on it?
Yes, we did.
We did, okay, good, all right, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, Russell, if you could call, call the question?
Sure. Councilmember Allbritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent.
All right, and I did want to add one other thing. Chris, I hope you're, you're smiling right now. And one last thing, when George Morris was talking about the flooding in Sunshine Ranches, he had referenced it being Hancock and Luray, it was actually Hollaty and Luray because that whole area was flooded and, yeah, Rod came by and it was, it was great to see you guys come out and actually visualize the flooding in our neighborhood. There seems to be that, when I first moved here, the, the part of, east part of Luray from Hollaty East had great, great drainage. But I guess there's been some construction in the area that, for some reason, I don't know whether it was a planning issue or something that, that the waters just, almost every time it rains, it just kind of floods there. And maybe the Drainage Advisory Board can take a look at that. That will conclude my comments, though.
Great, thank you, David. All right, I wanted to say a few things. I wanted to really first just thank the town for their confidence and their support in this past election. It, it really means a lot and I really appreciate that, that, that confidence. And, and we're gonna follow through with those things that we talked about during the campaign. And I'll talk a little bit about, more about that. I did want to congratulate other council members. Jim, congratulations to you. You, you were a warrior out there, rain, you know, wind, it didn't matter, night, day. One, one, one time I got out there early and it wasn't, the sun wasn't even up yet and you were out there already sitting there waving and everything else. So, so congratulations, you did an awesome job. I know you're gonna do an awesome job as a council member too, so congratulations there. And David, my congratulations goes out to you as well. You just, you know, I see your heart and soul in this. I know that everything that you spoke of during the campaign is, is gonna, exactly what you're about and, and that you will fight for the rural lifestyle. And I just couldn't be happier to have you, have you up there. So, congratulations to you as well. And, and Bob, I do congratulate you on the Vice Mayor as well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep. And Gary, it's good to have you up here. So, I also wanted to say a few words for those that have served on the council most recently and are not here. You know, it's not easy to serve up here. It's a real, it takes dedication, it takes a lot of hard work. You're always torn, there's, there's always two sides. I won't say you're always torn, but there's always two sides to everything that comes to the council. If it was flat out easy, it never would even make it to the council. So, so you're, there's always two sides, it's not easy. And, and, and so, I, I, I thank those that served before us and for their dedication, for their time and their effort. I specifically want to call out Doug McKay, our, our mayor. And, and, and even tonight, he came out and he passed the gavel to me and said some kind words and offered to do whatever it takes to have a smooth transition. So, Doug, I appreciate that, I, I sincerely do and, and we'll be talking. So, thank you for that and appreciate all the work that you've done. You know, as we went through the campaign process, campaign process is pretty brutal at times, but it, what it does is it really, you have so many conversations with so many residents and you really, it's a great process to really hear what's going on in town, what people are concerned about, what's important to them and what we need to be focusing on. And, and so I appreciate all those conversations. As I said from the very beginning of, of the campaign, I ran for one reason and one reason only. And that's to preserve the rural lifestyle of this town. That's what I'm committed to, that's what every decision up here is gonna be judged against and that's what it's gonna be about. And, and it's an honor to serve on a council that I know is, is in step with that and also is committed to that. So, we will obviously be, you know, concerned about other things, keeping our taxes low, you know, traffic issues, things like that. But preserving our rural lifestyle, this is something special that only Southwest Ranches has. And it's up to us, we, we're the guardians of it, to make sure that we preserve it, that we, we don't give in to the pressures. There's always pressures, external pressures, internal pressures to, to lose our focus, to give in just a little bit here, just a little bit there. And, and we have to fight that because once we give a little bit here, a little bit there, it never comes back, never comes back. So, so, so that's what we're charged with, you know? And, and so, when I, when I look at that, you know, I, many times, many times during the campaign, people would question me. Okay, okay, I get it, you're for the rural lifestyle, but what does that mean? And so, I just wanted to take a, a couple of minutes this evening to kind of address that and, and tell you what that, what that means to me. You know, we have some developments here that are going on in town and that's, you know, that's, that's private property. And so, people sell their property and, and someone else buys it and, and it gets, sometimes it gets developed. But it's, it's, you know, we live in America, that's, that's, that's how it works. But we can, we can do a lot of things to make sure, and I know this council, Bob and Gary, you, you did some amazing things just in the last six months in some of the developments going on to protect what's out there. I, I believe that every property that's developed here should have the space for a barn. I, I just don't think that's negotiable. I think that needs to be there and I think that's something that we need to focus on. We need to look at that when we talk about that visioning and the strategic. That's, that's something that we don't have today that I think we need to have. I think we've got other things to protect the dark sky, that's, that's critical. I mean, that's, that you can, as soon as you get out of town, you fly into this, you know, over Fort Lauderdale and there's this big dark spot for Western Broward County and that's, that's Southwest Ranches. And, and that's the way it should be in Southwest Ranches, we need to protect that. You know, there's, noise is an issue, you know, from traffic or things like that. But then there's other things where noise is a really good thing. It may be a little annoying here and there, but I wouldn't trade it for the world, you know, those, the peacock's that are, that are, you know, I don't know if you call it chirping or whatever, they're, they're loud, they're loud, but I love it, you know, I love it. There's, there's donkeys near my house and, and I hear them in the morning, I love it, I love it. And so, those, those, you know, those sights and sounds, we need to protect those as well. Not everybody realizes that when they come to the ranches, that those are there. And so, that's one of those things where people have objections, but we've got to protect it, that's who we are and that's what we're about. You know, our open spaces are critical. We, we are fortunate that open spaces were protected here through grants. Just when the town was formed, Broward County had some grants where we were able to purchase property. We are so blessed to have this open space and we need to protect that and, and, and keep those spaces open. You know, will there be areas where, where we have commercial? Sure, there's some areas like out on US twenty-seven where it just simply doesn't make sense to have homes out there. And so, so, you know, that's, that's fine, but in those residential areas, in those rural areas, we have to protect that there's no, no commercial coming into there to destroy those communities. We need to protect individual property rights. That's so critical that, you know, we, we want, we want this to be a better town, but we can't take away from our, our residents to do that. Everybody moved here with, with property rights and we, it's our job to protect those property rights going forward. And, 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 you know, we are blessed that we still have some of those pioneers still here in town. Some of those ranchers and farmers that helped found, you know, originate this town or the founders of this town. And we need to do everything we can to protect them, to support them and to make sure that they never feel like they're being pushed out of town in any way because this, this is their home and, and we are all blessed and we're all fortunate that, that they did what they did to protect it long before we were even here so that we can enjoy it. Those are the things that, you know, I'm gonna be looking to protect over the next four years. And, and I feel very good that, and very fortunate to work with the council that's here that I know is dedicated to these things as well. So, the one last thing I wanted to say along those lines is, is that, you know, accountability is important. And from a council standpoint, one of the things that I want to say to all the council members is it's our job to keep the town staff, attorney, all those accountable to the residents. Fortunately, I think we have a very good staff, so I think we're, we're fortunate that that's not a big deal. But that's, that's our job and sometimes that's tough. But we have to stand up for the residents regardless. On the other hand, when I speak to the residents, you have to hold us, the council, responsibility, responsible and you have to hold me responsible. I'm gonna do my best, I am, you know, dedicated to the things that I just spoke about. But, but I'm not perfect and sometimes I may get distracted and, and, you know, and, 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 and I look forward to you all holding me accountable because I'm only here for one reason and that's to preserve this rural lifestyle. And, and if you see that, anything other than that happening, I want to hear about it. You know, I'm gonna tell you a story, I wasn't really gonna say this, but I, I will, I will pass it on as an example. I don't know, six, eight months ago, I was having a, a conversation with one of our residents. And, and she said to me, you know, Steve, I'm really disappointed in you. And I was like, okay, hmm, all right, tell me more, you know, tell me what this is about. And, and she said, you know, you, you, you were talking about putting horse trails in over here. And I was like, well, but wait a minute, you know, I, I thought that was, that was what, that makes sense for a rural community. And she goes, yeah, but you know what? To do that, you were taking away the property rights of individuals that didn't deserve that. And, you know, and I thought about that and, and she was absolutely right and she was absolutely right. And that's why I'm saying some of these decisions aren't easy because we can be trying to do the right thing and still it turns out that maybe we weren't doing the right thing. So, we have to keep those things that I was just talking about in, in alignment, in the, in the forefront as we think of things because some of these decisions aren't easy, they have pluses and minuses. And, and just as I appreciated that resident bringing that to my attention, I'll appreciate a, any resident that, that has feedback like that, that I, I want, I want to hear it, I want to hear it. Because I really want to make sure that as a community. I really want to make sure that as a community, we're doing the right things for our town to preserve our rural lifestyle. One last piece of, of kind of just general business. There is a, a program out. It's a COVID-19 Mortgage Assistance Program designed to assist and help individuals that are, have been financially impacted by COVID-19. It's, it's a federal program, and, and it is available here in the ranches. And so I wanted to put that out there so that the, the window is closing on it. It is only, applications, my understanding, are only valid through the 27th of this month. So, if you have a need in that area, I would encourage you to contact the town administration. They can, they can point you in the right direction so that you can take advantage of that, if that makes sense. So, I'll just throw that out there in case that helps someone. Without that, I had a couple of other items, but you all covered them for me. So, I will, I'll pass those along, I will pass on those, and we will move into the legal comments. Keith, you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be incredibly brief. Congratulations to the new council. There's no doubt that we have an incredibly attentive and active council who will always work in the best interest of the town. And for staff, having that guidance and direction is what we look for, and it's going to be great working with everyone. It was wonderful seeing a few of the old time residents who showed up at the brief swearing in. Obviously, it couldn't be open to everyone because of the, of COVID. But I, you know, got to see even people like Sally Broken tonight and got to reminisce with Sally that, you know, next year is my 40th year living in the town. And I used to play at Sunshine Ranch's HOA meetings with her son, who now lives in Singapore. So, you know, it's amazing to see the pioneer plaque that David created and, and seeing so many names that I remember, who were so valuable in, in the town and in the, the entire area and preserving it for what it is today. In, in regards to drainage, Councilmember Kuzinski brought this up, so I just want to go into it. The area that he spoke about is actually really close to my mom's house, so I drive it all the time. And one thing that I think that when you look to the Drainage Committee on, and it's going to be a policy decision for the council, a lot of residents on Luray have started to plant the swale area that used to collect a, a lot of that water. And as you drive down Luray, you'll start to see more and more planting in the swale. And as that planting occurs, the water seems to be piling up in the middle of the road. And I know that when I was trying to help my mom with our horses a, a couple of days ago. So, you know, something to look at i- is those swales and whether or not the town seeks to do anything about it or just leave it alone. But I know I spoke to the mayor about it, and in the vision session, you know, it's definitely important for the new council to look at the code enforcement list again and determine what you all want to be proactive on or reactive on. And I would suggest that that be part of your visioning session as well, to give clearer direction to staff as to what it should be looking at for the preservation of the town drainage and, and the lifestyle that all of us seek to protect. Congratulations also to Robin Bartman. I, I, I think it's wonderful always working with her, and it's a true asset to the town. So, truly, truly congratulations to you. And, and the fact that you're still on this meeting is impressive. So, thank you for that.
I'm burning a lot.
And, and finally, I hope all of our, our fellow ranchers have a very safe and happy Thanksgiving. Clearly, COVID's on the rise, and, and I just want to make sure that everyone operates as safely as possible, because so far, we've been really good in this town, and I hope to keep the numbers stay there. So, thank you, Mayor. Turn it over to Andy for administrator comments.
Great. Thank you, Keith. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Let me start off by saying congratulations to all of you. Mayor Bright Cruz, you and I had worked together for six years previously and, and looking forward to working with you again. Councilmember Kuzinski and Councilmember Albritton, welcome aboard. I'm looking forward to working with both of you as well, and I know town staff is as well. Vice Mayor Hartman, congratulations on, on the upgrade. And Councilmember Jablonsky, thank you for being here. Representative Bartman, thank you for being with us tonight and, and sticking this out. I do look forward to working with you in the new capacity. I know that you're familiar with Nelson Diaz from Southern Group, who we work with on, on lobbying efforts. So, we'll, we'll coordinate those things. We've got a routine that we normally go through with our projects and getting those things up there. And, and we'll give you more than enough documentation to, to assist us. So, I thank you for that. I look forward to working with you. I do want to say a, a, a thank you to former Mayor McKay and Councilmembers Schroder and Amundson. It was a pleasure to work with them. I know that they were committed in serving the town, and I certainly wish them all the best. And other than that, I guess I just want to say, have, have a happy Thanksgiving, be careful, and everybody stay safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Andy. Yes, go ahead. You're on mute.
You're on mute, Andy.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Russell. Yeah, Mayor, one, one other thing that I had wanted to add. You had mentioned the mortgage assistance. That, that window has, has closed. We have promoted that via social media and other things, but under the CARES Act, there is funding that still exists for small businesses, and that deadline has been extended to December 2nd. So, for those businesses who are on here who have been impacted by, by the COVID pandemic, all you have to do, go to broward.org/cares, broward.org/cares, and the information will be there that will guide you as far as what programs are available, what the eligibility is. That will answer any questions you have. So, please share that with, with anybody you know who's a business owner. Once again, broward.org/cares. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Andy. Thank you for that correction. All right. Item number nine is ordinance on first reading. Russell, if you could read that in.
Certainly, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2021 through 2025 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, David. These are kind of ministerial types of items we have to go through. All right. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, Russell, call a question. I'm sorry, is, just to be sure, is there any public comment on this motion?
There's no one with their hands raised at this moment, Mayor.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Item number 10?
Item number 10 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving an agreement with R&amp;D Electric, Inc. in the amount of $133,000, $33,000, excuse me, $133,500 and zero cents to purchase and to install a generator at the Southwest Ranches Fire Station, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Great. Thank you, Russell. Andy, if maybe you could give an overview on this, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Mayor. This, this is a generator for the fire station. It is 75% grant funded. That is a 2,400 square foot modular building with three separate air conditioners. We also have two separate modular units with, they use for storage. They're also air conditioned, and it powers the trucks. It powers the electric gate system. The station currently is drawing 106 kilowatts. If you add a 25% surplus to that, that takes us up to 132 kilowatts. They don't offer 132 kilowatt generators. We rounded up to 100, 150 kilowatts is the next size that would sufficiently power that building and leave us a little bit of room for growth. So, and obviously, I and both Rod are available for questions, Mayor.
Great, great. And I think also, Andy, this generator, one of the things that I, you know, when we talk about visioning and the future, one of the things that I believe we need to be looking at, hopefully funded through Robin, through some appropriations out of Tallahassee, is we, we need a facility out west for fire, a permanent facility, a hardened facility that will serve us in a lot of different ways, not just through fire, but a lot of different ways. And so hopefully, this generator, as we pursue that other property, we'll be able to actually, if we need to move this to a permanent facility out there as well. So.
Forward to follow that with you all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Robin. That's, it would be great.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Another motion and a second. Is there any further council comment on this item?
Yeah, kind of a little off subject with it. I, I know this is for the volunteers, and I kind of forgot to mention this during my comments, that I think the volunteers are doing a wonderful job for the town. On Election Day, there was a very serious automobile crash just west of the Grace Baptist Church. And I confirmed with, with the chief that when the volunteers had showed up, the, one of the victims was not breathing, and they cleared his mouth and were able to resuscitate the patient, the victim of the accident. And that is all thanks to our volunteers. They're definitely an asset to our town. And I, I think that this is great for them, and it's great for the area, and it's essential.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David. I agree 100%. Any other council comment? All right. Russell, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, Mayor, I don't see anyone with their hands raised.
I'm sorry, Steve. I keep leaving myself muted. I have a question for Marty. Marty, in the past, questions have been brought. He's got his earbuds in. I'm not sure if he's hearing me.
Yes, I hear you.
You do? Fantastic. You know, we, we always get questions when we buy this type of equipment, you know? Do we know what the maintenance costs are going to be? And, and I'm just asking the question, have you estimated that already for next year's budget? Because I'm assuming this comes covered the first year. Actually, I don't recall from the, the document, but have you already estimated out the, the maintenance costs on this? Do you have an estimate you could share with us?
Yes, there, there is required maintenance in accordance with FEMA requirement, and that runs about $1,500 a year. And we do include this every year in our CIP program odds listed, either whether it be an operational or capital expenditure. So, I have that details. Now, this is a little unusual, because it's a carryover, a grant award. So, we, we've included this detail last minute with, with the budget appropriation as a carryover. So, normally, besides the actual, the diesel fuel that will be required and, and to fill it up, it does run about $4,000, and we facilitate the fill-up initially with the carryover. Necessarily, it's about 1,500. They come out four times a year, five to $600 per visit. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, no, no. I, I mean, we, we constantly get the questions after the fact. Did you know how much? So, I, I think it's a good question. Thank you.
That's all I had. Great. Thank you. Any other council comments on this item? Okay, Russell, if you can call a question?
Mayor, if I may jump in, Councilmember Kuzinski just texted me, his phone died. His battery died. I'm sorry, his battery died, and Russell is calling him on the phone to get him on the line.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
Never mind, it looks like he's back.
David, are you with us?
David, you're on mute.
I think he is frozen.
There he is.
There is. There he is.
Welcome back, David.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Russell, if you can call the question?
Certainly, Mayor. This is item 10. So, Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, great. Thank you. Item number 11.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the city of Cooper City, providing water services to 5950 Assad Court, 13950 Sterling Road, 5850 Assad Drive, and 5900 Assad Way. Four single-family homes lying within the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, provided that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the city of Cooper City, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, if I may, just real quickly, in accordance with the council's prior policy dealing with connectivity to water, you all may recall that the properties directly to the east of this property had previously come before the council in order to connect to Cooper City water. We made an agreement with Cooper City that anyone connecting would need to come before the town council for approval. So, this is the property west of the last property in this location to seek water service. So, it's here for your consideration and approval.
Thank you, Keith. I just have a quick question, Rod. So, my understanding, Rod, is that, that the water line itself is already in front of these properties? They're just hooking up? Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Is there any, any discussion from the council on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
I don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask a question real quick? Mr. Polikoff, you mentioned in a meeting several months back about people having to join if a neighbor had it within 500 foot. Is that ever going to affect the people that don't want water in that area? Councilmember Albritton, we were successful in getting Broward County to amend its regulation. And as such, this particular zoning district, which is rural ranches, is now exempt from that mandatory connectivity. So, we were very successful in, in our lobbying efforts there. And as a result, this will have no impact on the neighbors.
Great. Thank you. Great question, Jim. Thanks. All right. Russell, if you can call the question?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you. Item number 12.
Item number 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a newly revised First Amendment to the Regional Interlocal Agreement between Broward County and the town of Southwest Ranches, providing for cooperative participation in a regional public safety intranet, repealing and replacing the initial First Amendment to the Regional Interlocal Agreement approved by the Town Council on March 12, 2020 pursuant to Resolution 2020-030, adopted on March 12, 2020, authorizing execution and providing an effective date.
Great. Thank you, Russell.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right.
Somebody beat me.
You're on mute, Bob.
Mayor, Mayor, if I could speak to this for just a moment?
Yes, please.
This is, this is not optional. This is a requirement for us to participate in the Broward County Emergency 911 system. This is Broward County standard agreement, and they're updating. This is Broward County standard agreement and their update. And there's some, there's some key points of what it does. It basically clarifies the basic level, base levels of service. It clarifies the language between the county and the operator, which is BSO, and it establishes an operational review team. But again, it's, it's, this is mandatory for us to participate in the Emergency 911 system.
Great, great. Thank you, Andy. Any, any discussion on this item from the council? Any public comment on this item?
I see none, Mayor.
All right, if you can call a question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item number 13.
We did that already.
Yeah, we went through that, Mayor.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Fortunately, yeah, that's a good one to have behind us. All right, item number 14.
Item 14 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a year-end budget adjustment for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget and providing for an effective date.
Okay, Marty, are you, if you can kind of give us an overview of what this is, entails? And appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, it's my chance now to welcome you all and as well as State Rep Bartman to our team. I, prior to moving to Cooper City over six years ago, as you all know, I lived in Weston for almost 25 years. So I know Robin has at least 20 years, Robin, of the 25 years in Weston. And I remember all those elections and efforts and success. So congratulations with that. And now up in the state, we're looking forward to get all we can to Southwest Ranches. So I look forward.
Everything I can. List here. I have the retained area from Hollingsworth. I have the permanent facility out west for fire. I've got the annex discussion I have to have with Bob and I haven't even gotten the, the big list that I'm about to get from Andy.
Yeah, well, like Andy has mentioned, Southern Company are up there in Tally, our eyes and ears. And we need them to meet with you. And, and of course, we got Broward days, so they haven't chosen yet who will be going up there. So that'll be a fun adventure. So thank you, Robin. Okay, and now council, of course, Dave Kozinski, Jim Albritton, Mayor Bright Cruz, you've been so actively involved forever since Andy and I have both been here. So this is wonderful. And this agenda item tonight is our year-end budget adjustment. It's once a year. It, it needs to be done in accordance with Florida statutes. We got a 60-day timeframe where this needs to be adopted. And I am, has nothing to do with the financial end. It's really budget end. And this makes sure that we don't overspend our budget as you adopted the year before. So what this amendment and adjustment, you will see in the second page, over, on an overview basis, I'm proud to report that none of the five funds, our regular town funds exceeded their fund appropriation. And also our 501(c)(3) component unit, the Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Rescue, also for the eighth year, has not exceeded their budget appropriation. So that's in effect a separate fund we track and maintain, as you're aware. So there's no need to do any fund-wide adjustments. However, our charter also requires departmental adjustments. And that's what's before you tonight, our, our departmental adjustments within the general fund. So this summary on Exhibit A, the top half being the revenues aspect and the bottom portion is the expenditure side. Basically encompasses four departments, legislative, which is you, your department, building permitting, code enforcement, zoning services, and planning services. And these only require the adjustment. And I'm, I'm very, very pleased to report that these departments have our overages because we've had revenues to exceed the expenditures. So we have offsetting, offsetting revenues within those revenue line items. For example, the first one being legislative, you will see an increase needed of $14,200. And above the line, you will notice that is our scholarship education advisory group. Also, we forecasted 20,000 in anticipated donations, fundraising. Well, we, we ended up with 34,200. So above the line and below the line, you'll see an increase to equal 14,200. The building permitting services, we've had an incredible boom year. This is a record year in construction. We know we're in a COVID environment, but there, the impact to construction and development have been fantastic. So our building permitting services requires a 531,931 increase. But above the line, you will see a building permitting fee increase adjustment of $712,316. The difference why it's slightly off is our cost recovery offset, the 25% that comes to the town as part of our contract with cap government. The next is our code enforcement zoning services has a, requires $43,553. You will see, in that case, above the line, practically the same amount to offset. And our zoning services, along with our construction and building services, are substantially higher. So that's where that comes in play. And our planning services, finally, the 59,142 is needed, which also has a revenue item of 83,916 to offset any of these increases. The total adjustment is $648,826 that we require tonight. And that basically recaps the total I have tonight. And in the narrative, I did cover the fact that, as, to document and codify the fact that our, not only we receive all our proceeds requested from Hurricane Dorian, a small amount, less than 5,000, that was only $4,067. But we've fully recovered 90, or we expect to recover 98% for Hurricane Irma that happened a few years ago. And our emergency line credit has been fully restored to the $10 million limit that's available. Knock on wood, we still have a, a couple of days for hurricane season, but I haven't heard any recent storms coming our way. So let's pray we don't get hit with any storms in that regard. So that's my quick recap. I'm turning it back to you, Mayor. If we have a motion on the floor for ratification, thank you.
Great, thank you, Marty. Thank you, Marty. Do I have a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Gary. Second, perfect. Any, any questions or comments for Marty or related to this item?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, great job, Andy and Marty. This is a surplus of, like, they don't call it that, but that's really what it is, $648,000. And I attribute that to prudential management and constructive management done by the council and, and done by the administration. And which puts us in, and this is, this is the, I think, the 11th straight year that I've had, that I've been on the council, where there's been a, a surplus. And I'd like to think that we are very good stewards of watching our town's revenue stream and money and how it's spent. And usually this is just, this is the proof, you know, that, that we're on, that we're doing it correctly. So just want to mention it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for, for that comment.
Yeah, I've got one or two as well. I, I, I want to, you know, agree with Gary's statement. I mean, the whole town administration deserves credit for this. Everybody's watching their budgets during these super challenging times. And to have a surplus of 648 is phenomenal. Marty, when you send out this type of information, can you send out the matching? I don't know if you've got a P and L that backs all these up or the financial statements. Because when I, this is difficult for me read, to read as a kind of a financial person and make head or tail. I mean, I, I can read it obviously, but it would be helpful with, you know, to compare with, with our budget and P and L to see where we're going. Because here, here's another piece of the 648. I want to make sure at the end of the year, when we're starting to put our budgets together, we don't have large surpluses. I mean, we ought to try to, I hate to say, spend that money every year, but we, we should plan for it. I mean, a little bit of a surplus is always a good thing, but this is more than half a million bucks. We can get a lot done with this. So just a couple. Thank you.
Sure, Councilmember. I have a worksheet I'll be happy to forward to you.
Maybe you could forward it to the council so that everybody comes up to speed on the info.
Okay, certainly.
Thank you. That's all, Steve. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Bob. Any other council comments on this? Yeah, I'd just like to also add my appreciation for the hard work that the staff has done to really watch, watch the dollars and ensure that this kind of a surplus doesn't just happen. It happens because a team is working together and, and watching all the spending and making sure that things are in alignment. So great job and appreciate all the work that went into this.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker with their hands raised. I believe it's Noel Hollingsworth.
Okay, great.
Mr. Hollingsworth, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Noel Hollingsworth, 109 AI Avenue. Again, Marty, kudos from a resident. You did a fantastic job of keeping us out of the red. And to the staff, I'd like to say fantastic for bringing the budgets in and the estimates and everything and below what we have budgeted, therefore giving us the surplus that we all love to see at the end of the year when we hear this report. And in the future, keep up the good work and thank you very much for your efforts. I'm done.
Great, thank you, Noel. Any other public comment?
No, Mayor. No one else does the hands raise.
Okay, if we can, any other council comment? All right, if we can call a question.
Mayor, Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, great. The next item on the agenda is an item that I put on the agenda specifically because I wanted to have a conversation with the council on this. Could have brought it up in council member comments. I know a couple of the council members did bring it up in their comments. But I wanted to have this on the agenda specifically because this was such a, a major event for our town. And I wanted to bring up the item, not that, we're not going to solve it tonight, obviously. But what I wanted to do was get some feedback on your thoughts as far as things that we should be addressing. This has to do with the flooding that we, we experienced in the last, last week or so. And to me, I thought that overall, you know, this was a huge event, obviously. Largest event that I've ever seen since I've been out here. And overall, I mean, hey, we flooded. Okay, so overall, we flooded. But the drainage system seemed to operate as well as could be expected, given the volume of rain that we experienced in such a short period of time. The roads seem to come up from under the water within maybe 36 to 48 hours in most places. And overall, from that standpoint, I think we, we did fairly well. Areas that I, I think we can do better on is, I know I got several calls about alternatives for animals, high ground, where they could go. And there was, there was an opportunity. I don't know if it was an opportunity from the beginning. I didn't hear about it from the beginning. I heard it after we were probably 24 hours into the rain, that there was an option for, in Davie, for the Bergeron rodeo grounds was an option for animals. I think we need to look at some things here internally that, that we can do ourselves. I think we, you know, when I was driving through the town, I saw some, even, even on the, the corner of Dykes and Griffin Road, of course, right by Dykes, that was a lake. But to a little further west, where that fill came in, when I drove by, that was still above waterline. So I don't know, that, that may be an option, but there may be other options in town that I'm not aware of. But that's one of the things that we think we should strategize on. And so I kind of wanted that discussion and, and get your thoughts. See if there was other things that you saw that we should be focusing on. I think, I think this is something, this, this, this 100-year event seems to come by pretty frequently. Not every year, but, but fairly frequently. And, and so I think it's something we should plan for. I asked Rod to, to, to be here and Andy asked Rod to be here as well to kind of give us an overview of the event itself. Maybe walk us through a little bit of the drainage, how, Rod, how you felt it worked or it didn't work. Any feedback you have along those lines? And just, just your thoughts for the event and, and maybe some things that need to be looked at in the future.
Yeah, I'll just turn it over to Rod.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the, the, the time. So a lot of people, and I want to throw out some numbers out here just to help put certain things in perspective. Because I know we throw out certain metrics and, and rain events. So through my coordination with both Central Broward and with South Broward, out here on the east side, we received about 15 inches of rain. Out west, they registered about 18.4 inches of rain in about a 48-hour period. To put that in perspective, the, the 100-year, 72-hour event is 70, is 15 inches. So out west, we actually exceeded the 100-year event. And I want to, I wanted actually to talk about and discuss a, a couple of things. One being, the 100-year event is, is what we used before for the termination of the 100-year, or I'm sorry, the finished floor elevation of homes and structures. So with that matrain that fell down, we theoretically should have been at a point where, where almost houses were underwater. So I'm actually very happy to, to report to you guys that I, I did not receive one call of a resident telling us that water actually intruded their house. I can say, I think from, from South Broward as well, they didn't receive any, any calls of anybody saying that water actually went into their homes. So for me, that's a big win, just, just putting that amount of water and just understanding how much, you know, it was. So, so, so I think, to what you were saying before, the, the, the system worked as well as it could have worked. We have limitations at the S9 pump station. It actually pumps out a 1.9 million, a 1.6 million gallons a minute. So it's just, to put that a little bit in perspective, if you look at South Broward's drainage basin of 78 square miles and you anticipate about a 12-inch amount of rain on top of that basin, you're looking at roughly 16 billion gallons of water. So it's just a sheer amount of water. It's just too much. The pumps couldn't really handle them and. And the staging got to the point where, where it really theoretically should have been. So there, there's things that we could definitely do better. We're going to try to exercise anything that we can do to meet with South Broward and Central Broward and maybe get together and discuss certain things that, that we can improve. And specifically to our reaction, maybe of closing certain roads down earlier. But, but yeah, it's overall worked extremely well, given the amount of rain that we got.
Great, great. Thank you, Rod. Thank you, Rod. So from, from the council perspective, I don't know if there's, I, I would like to, coming out of this, schedule an event. Where we, we as a council, obviously the residents would be invited. But get the two drainage districts together. Maybe invite some other towns if they're interested in joining in. But I will say overall, I want to be focused on Southwest ranches. And, and talk about. Their, understand from their perspective, what's, what their plans are in the future, how that will impact us. You know, there's a lot that goes on that is not evident. You know, easily evident. I'll give like one example of it. So. So as we've talked about earlier in the meeting, we have the pumps at one seventy-second that are really the only pumps in town. That can push water out of Southwest ranches into the C eleven canal. Everything else is gravity fed. And so, so then the, the question is like, well, we should just. Turn that on like crazy and pump out as much as we can, which, you know, makes sense to dry us out as quickly as possible. But there's ramifications to that because by pushing that water in there, it slows down, fills up. You know, it, it helps rise the C eleven canal and then therefore slows down some of the drainage and some of the other areas. So, so there's an art to this. So, so what, what I'm saying is that I think we need to understand. Really how all the pieces come together and what the, the drainage districts, the two that are in, that impact our town. Kind of what their plans are and, 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 and see if additional pumps would be helpful. See if that's something we should be looking at. Once I, once again, from an animal standpoint, what can we be doing to be more proactive? So that when we see a storm coming, we can be telling residents, you know, these are almost like when a hurricane comes in, you know, they, they talk about shelters and places where you can bring, you know, not. Not large animals, but you know, dogs and pets and things like that to shelter. Well, we, we should have, you know, maybe some, some locations already that are designated where animals can go safely. And we know they're going to be, you know, out of the, out of the floodwaters. So, and there may be other things out there. So I, I'll just throw that out there. I don't know if there's any other thoughts from the council. On pulling this larger discussion together and any topics that we should be discussing when we get together.
I have some comments, Steve, but I see Ms. Potelman's got her hand up.
Oh, okay, great.
I would definitely like to be part of that meeting. And I think it would be really important. We have a climate change task force that I served on. That we could get representation from, that there is a hundred-point plan to deal with a lot of these issues. And a lot of the issues we take on are a regional approach. So I think it's important to bring in your neighboring cities. It's something we can work on together. Because anything that one city does will impact the other city. So, and a great example is when they were raising the roads in one municipality close to another municipality out east. The water just went the other way to the, and impacted the other residents. So I, I definitely would like to be part of this and I'm glad you're spearheading it. And I think it's something we all need to work on and have the water management district people there to see what can be done. And I look forward to hearing more about that drainage area and all of that at a future meeting as well. So thank you for being proactive.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate your support on that.
Hey, Steve?
Yes.
When you put that together, or Andy, or whomever, I'd also encourage you to invite South Florida Water Management District. The two drainage districts do a great job, but they're powerless to move it into the Everglades or east. So, you know, we, we need their help. They're the ones who load the main canal that lower all the rest of the canals.
Right, great point. Absolutely.
Yes, Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, absolutely.
There were two takeaways that I got from that situation a week ago. One was obviously the roads and traffic. Maybe there's some sort of a, an emergency facility we can be using for, for towing. Or to get people through water because a lot of smaller cars, low, low-profile cars were, you know, basically stuck. You know, those of us that had trucks, you know, we got through it. Kids down the street from me were using ATVs to water ski on the street. So, I mean, you know, that's how deep it was, but it was, thankfully it was short-lived. Idea that you started out with, and I think we, is a capital idea that we should probably entertain it. We currently have a turnout area at Rolling Oaks Barn for hurricane-impacted, you know, for the horses on that front ten acres. Well, that turned into the Gulf of Rolling Oaks, for lack of a better way of saying it, with this hundred-year event. But you know, but you did, you, you, you noticed quickly that the five acres that has the fill put in and is stabilized. Was pretty much dry. I mean, there were some low points in it, but it was pretty much dry. And I'm wondering if we should take the initiative and stabilize that with, like we do at Equestrian Park and we have it at. Country Estates where we should bring, as, as a project coming up, we should be putting dirt and veal. In there and use that as a large animal turnout for flooding. As opposed to, because Rolling Oaks was basically useless at that point. A, nobody could get in past matter. I mean, I already pretty much got it thought out as to where I, I need to suggest to the Drainage. Infrastructure Board where the next, one of the next projects should go. But in all seriousness, but that area with another couple inches of soil and. Grass on it, I think would be a perfect turnout area for a flooding area because it's accessible right there off of Griffin Road, which never, to my knowledge, didn't flood out at all. That, that handled it. That was the dry point, you know, Griffin Road all through the town. And we, we could have some sort of parking area where trailers come in and offload their horses. Because it was a huge problem everywhere across the town. I just know about Rolling Oaks predominantly that night, that day. Where most barns and stalls were flooded and the horses had nowhere and even cattle had nowhere to go. And maybe we want to even go so far as we'll come get your horse. You know, contract with a, a trailer, you know, a trailer company or companies to move. The animals until their, their pastures recede. Because my pasture and my back pasture right now is still underwater. I mean, in the back acre, it's just completely flooded and it's great for the ducks, you know, but the horses can't go back in there right now. Because, you know, they have to go up on the FPL access road to stay dry. So that's kind of a, you know, it's not going to work. So maybe we need to move as a good use for that five acres for right now to, to improve that. For a, a flood situation. Because I've got a funny feeling we're going to have another one of these, probably sooner than later, you know, probably sooner than later. And, and we can always be using that for, and I know this is one of your things, main topic, is a farmer's market. Something, some sort of a town event. Once we have the stabilized parking in, then people can go on it and, or animals or what have you. That, you know. You know, can serve dual purposes. You know, I just want to throw that out there because we've already got it and we just need to improve it a little bit. You know, and I think it's probably well within our budget to do that. Put in the proper fencing, you know, for make an animal. And, and obviously we need, we need a buy-in from the equestrian community. They need to go look at it and say, you need to do this, you need to do that. I'm not a horse person. I'm the first guy to admit that. I barely know what the north end of the southbound horse is like. You know, so I, you know, I would rather they tell us what to do. And then we put together some sort of project or plan. And I'm just throwing out that, that out there for council consideration at this point. So I think the five acres would be an excellent place to do that if we chose to do that. I want to throw that up.
Perfect, perfect. I, I agree.
Let, let me ask you a question about it because I'm a chicken guy. I'm not a horse guy anymore. That's once upon a time. I know the horses can't be in the water and, but here, here's the real question. We, we keep saying animals. I believe for the hurricanes, we've dealt with horses in the past. You know, we've got every kind of animal in town. How far are we going to go with this? Because I don't know if you want to put a bull in with a bunch of cows or a bunch of horses. Or, you know, I don't know if, if, you know, goats are fine with them, but I know donkeys aren't good with everything. So we, we probably need to come up with some, maybe we need to create a couple of different fenced-in areas for different kinds of animals that get along. But there's probably a bunch of thinking to do about this.
Yeah, segregate paddocks or something.
Yeah.
So I, you know, that's all up for consideration. I mean, five acres is a lot of, a lot of land.
Yep.
You know, but it can get eaten up very quickly if you have twenty horses out there, you know. I mean, look, you see the shot right behind me. That was Hurricane Irma. And that was, there's twenty, thirty horses there on the ten acres, you know, in Rolling Oaks. You know, so they can, they, they require a lot of space. What that is, I don't, I don't remember. I remember from my agricultural days, there was a, a ratio of cattle and horses per square foot of pasture. You know, and, and things of that, things of that nature. And I just don't have that, have that in front of me right now, the details. But I'm pretty sure that's available from the equestrian community, something like that. Just something we need, we can plan on. I'm sorry, Bob, I didn't mean to.
Oh, no.
Grab it, grab it.
Oh, no, it's fine.
Yeah, no, I think that's what this is all about, is the, the fact that we don't know all the answers right now. As I said before, we're not going to decide anything in this, in this discussion. But I think it brings out a lot of good points that, things that we do need to work on. Because I also think this is not going to be the last time we have this type of event. So. So I, I, you know, my, my thought is that based on this discussion, that I would like to direct our administration. To begin pulling together the entities that we've talked about to try and. I think we need to do two things. First is, is kind of pull together an agenda of, of the various topics, the things that we think should be addressed in this. Kind of a summit. And then the second one is, you know, then the appropriate attendees to go in there that would be able to help us. I think there's a drainage element. I think there's an animal element to it. I don't know, maybe there's a road element. I don't, I don't know what else would be in there. So I would encourage you to think about that and provide, you know, your feedback to the administration. As you think about it on the different topics. And, you know, I would be looking, you know, I don't know, maybe sometime February, March, something like that to have this, have this discussion.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's appropriate, you know. One of the things I did notice, and I need to point this out, and I touched on it earlier, was what, right after all the rain stopped, the, the, the main body of it. I was talking to several of the horse owners around me and I was mentioning that I have like a quarter acre dry spot. On my property that it's fenced in and controlled that they could bring their horses to if they wanted to, it wasn't being used. And their big problem was moving the animals. They, they really didn't have the facility, trailers, or the ability to get out of their flooded homes and, and their areas. At that time, they were dealing with a lot of issues, you know, chickens, goats and, and the what have you. You know, overwhelming to them, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And so, you know, maybe, and I was kind of, you know, being serious about, maybe we need to hire some sort of a standby transport company. Maybe the town needs to invest in some equestrian trailers that can move, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to that, you know, those kind of ideas. I mean, when you're, you're talking about floods away, we got them, you know, maybe we do need to look at that. So I just want to throw that up.
Absolutely. It's a good thought.
There's another thing I wanted to throw out too from my driving around. You know, we built, we bought our property in eighty-eight. And if this was a hundred-year storm, I need to be three hundred years old because I've seen three of them now. And they were all just like this. I mean, one was Tropical Storm or Hurricane Gordon, and then we had Tropical Storm No Name. I mean, this, I don't think this is going to get to be less and less. Look at the hurricane season this year we had. It was crazy. One of the things that really concerned me, you know, we built our house, we finished our house in ninety-two, we got our permits. Actually, we got our permits in ninety, we finished in ninety-four. And. You know, my house, my finished floor is at, I think, ten-nine. We put it a little higher than what the county had recommended at the time. Now, the concern I have, all the newer homes across town, my street, pretty much all the houses are, you know, less than thirty years old. So they were in, on pretty high house pads. But when I went down certain parts of one eighty-eighth, particularly down south by the landscape nurseries where it comes out from. Three, four, or five, I noticed a lot of those older homes as cars were driving past on the road. The waves were breaking on the front of the house. These houses weren't high enough up. Now, I don't know if that means, and I don't know who controls this, Rod, but maybe we need to start thinking a little higher. A lot of people were complaining about their barns being flooded out too. Somebody called me from Roca, whose barn was under about a foot of water. So I, I don't know the answers to these questions. I don't know how we fix that. I don't know if we do need to fix, considering my house was so much higher. But who knows where it's going to be next time? I mean, we had, I know they say, we had, I, I think I heard eighteen inches of rain from Rod. My rain gauge said twenty-four. So, you know, rain is localized, but my point is if, if we get another storm like this with another four to six inches of rain, we will have houses flooding. A lot of my friends that live over in Weston, they're, my old boss, she's kind of lost her house. The first floor had a foot of water. Everything is ruined on the first floor. So it's around. I just don't know if we've heard about it from anybody, but I'm concerned that, you know, going forward, given climate change and everything else, maybe our house pads need to be looked at. The elevation of them. Just a thought.
Yep. All right, good. Any other discussion on this item? All right. Well, thank, thank you for the feedback on that. I really appreciate it. I think this is something that is important for our town to focus on. And so we'll look for. A discussion. Probably like I said, in the spring sometime, February, March timeframe, when we've got a little bit more information. A little bit more focused on, on where we actually want to focus our discussion on. But thanks.
No problem, Mayor. I'll, I'll, I'll work on fleshing it out and get together with you. And I'll give you some feedback and we'll, and we'll, we'll build it out.
Perfect. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Item number sixteen, approval of minutes.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All right. Any corrections on the minutes?
Don't say it.
I know it. Holding off. Is there any public comments on this one?
There are some traditions I don't mind going away. Let's just say that.
I held on.
If there's no changes, great job, Russell.
Debbie, Debbie.
And Debbie.
All right. There's a motion to approve the minute.
There was.
Oh, we did?
We have that.
So fast. All right. Russell, if you can call the question.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albritton? Councilmember Jablonsky? Councilmember Kuzinski? Vice Mayor Hartman? Mayor McKay. I'm sorry, Mayor. I totally apologize for that.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Five zero, okay.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Gary. All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Good job, guys. Great, great meeting.
Fabulous job, Steve.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Rob. Bye.
Good night.
Staff, thank you so much for this evening, for the, putting on the swearing in, in the mask and, and the effort that was there. I thank you so much. It was quite an honor to be sworn in in town hall. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Good night, folks.